Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of July 13th. And welcome to being back in person. I am the vice chair currently, and so in the absence of having elected a chair yet, I'll be chairing the meeting. I want to review the agenda really quickly. We have community input at 7:00. Actually, before I do that, I want to say that David Modell, who's also a member of the board, he will be joining us as he's making his way back from Western Mass. And in the meantime, do we, are we all set up, Tim, for him to be participating remotely?
I believe so. I'm waiting for him to call.
Okay. All right. So he hasn't called in yet. All righty. Great. So after community input, we will, we're going to move the next two, the next item on the agenda, the Select Board elections, until David is here. So then we'll have the LEPC update with Chief Fisher, and then the appointment of the part-time police officer with Chief Fisher. We're going to move the discussion of the format of the future Select Board meetings to when David is here as well. So those two items, number two and number five, will move further down on the agenda. Then we'll be looking at the contracts to award the Greeno Dam construction project. Then we're going to have a presentation on the Highland Building Committee funding request. We'll be discussing the American Rescue Plan and the charge for the committee that we're going to establish here in Carlisle. We have quite a bit of time set to look at the, take a first look at the Carlisle personnel policies. And then at 9:00, we will be a brief discussion about setting up an August 10th Select Board meeting to discuss goals for the next year. We'll be looking at the annual appointments and discussion of liaison assignments, cemetery deeds at 9:20, the town administrators' report at 9:25, liaison reports, and at the end, approval of the minutes and warrants, and adjournment, we hope, at 9:50 p.m. So, thank you all. And let me begin by asking if anyone is here to offer community input? Yes. Would you like to go first, Jeannie?
You want me to go?
Yeah. Why don't you come up? And then they'll be able to hear you on the recording, too.
Sure.
Thanks. And don't forget to introduce yourself.
Do I, I used to face this way? Am I supposed to face this way now?
Either is fine.
Turn it.
You can turn it if you prefer. Yeah, as long as your face is at the, your mouth is at the mic.
I don't know where the camera is.
It's up there. Yeah.
Oh, it's there now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. Super great. Okay, this is to make up for a delinquency from the last Select Board meeting. I wasn't prepared to say goodbye to Al Lewis, Alan Lewis, last time. And it's very short, 30 seconds. And I would just like to, I emailed him, emailed him, and thanked him for his work. And I would like it into the meeting minutes. And so if you can bear with me for 30 seconds, it says, "Hi, Alan. Just wanted to say thank you for your service to Carlisle as a Select Board member and for working on the LEPC and other committees I may not be, I may be missing here. I am especially sorry that you are no longer a part of the Select Board. Your performance overall was great, but you excelled at being chair. In your work, you were always attentive to the issues, always fair to other members of the Select Board and to the citizens of Carlisle, and always listened with an open mind and with great courtesy and respect. I knew that when you made a decision, it would be made with great integrity. I feel certain the entire Select Board and the police chief and the other attendees at that last meeting, and those not there, were also sorry to see you leave. Finally, thank you for acknowledging my presence at the meetings. It meant a lot. Hope you and Barbara have a great summer vacation planned. You deserve the break. Respectfully, Jeannie Janetsko." And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Vanessa?
Hi. Vanessa Maroni, Bedford Road. I'm here tonight to make a comment and a request regarding your agenda item for the Highland Building Committee funding request. My request, I have to hold this farther away, is that you do not vote on this item tonight, and that you limit the agenda item to discussion only. Like most residents, I get the bulk of my information from articles in The Mosquito. And the last coverage I've seen in The Mosquito pertaining to the Highland Building request for funding was from June 23rd, where it was noted that the Select Board was in agreement that the, quote, "logical next step" was for the school committee to be consulted first before spending money. I was pleased to see this path forward as both sensible and responsible. When I saw tonight's agenda, and I was confused as to why I hadn't seen a notice for the school committee to meet and review this first, I now understand that somewhere along the line, the plan changed, and the school committee has not had a chance to review the proposal and vote on whether or not they support it. I feel that this significant change in process has not been duly communicated to residents who are trying to stay informed about the Highland Building. I want to be clear that I support and applaud efforts to build and provide affordable housing for municipal employees. But if the school committee, who is the major stakeholder in the Highland Building project, is not on board with either or both of these proposals, then it would be irresponsible to spend $6,000 of taxpayer money. As I see it, there are four issues with taking a vote tonight. One is if people only read The Mosquito, then they are still waiting to know when the school committee will be meeting to review the request for funding. Number two is money should not be spent until there is demonstrated community support, especially from the major stakeholder, the school committee. Number three is the Highland Building project is probably the most controversial thing that is happening in town right now, and taking a vote on this without enough notice to residents during the summer when most people are away, and at a time when committees are adjusting to new members and new leadership, seems unnecessary. This is not an urgent issue. It can safely wait a few weeks, a couple weeks, for the school committee to have a chance to convene and discuss. And number four, this goes to, speaks to the fiscal sustainability, which is one of the major spokes for the master plan project, is that in general, spending money from unused capital funds should be done sparingly and with adequate due diligence. These funds only exist because they were not used towards something else, which did endure our town's extensive budgeting process. The proposal has not been thoroughly vetted yet. I would ask you to keep in mind all the proposed budget items for this new fiscal year, which didn't make the cut, and are less controversial and more critical to day-to-day life in Carlisle.
Hey, David.
Please don't vote tonight. Wait until the school committee has a chance to review and discuss the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. All right, is there any other community input? All right, well, then we'll move along. And Chief Fisher with the LEPC report.
Vanessa has a copy of David's, since he wasn't able to.
Yeah. Vanessa, before you go, do you have a copy of your statement? And we could at least.
We'd like to have David have a chance.
I'm here. Okay. Very good.
Well, we're just thinking to make sure we could get it to David, but if you want to send it an email, that works, too.
I made an edit, so.
Okay. That's okay. Yes, Chief?
Hey, thanks for having me. I just want to make sure that Select Board member Modell is able to join us here before he gets fired up.
He's on the line.
You feeling pretty good about this? All right.
Welcome, David.
Hi, I can barely hear anybody.
Well, I'll put my basketball coach voice on, then. This is the LEPC update. The LEPC met yesterday at 10:00 in the morning. And the reports, summary reports include Linda Fantasia from the Board of Health provided information that we've had 11 new cases since April 10th, which brings our total of 17 probable, 192 confirmed in our town. Probably many people heard that yesterday, the last large clinic closed, I think in Dartmouth, and the state is now moving toward refocusing on local events. And there was discussion about the potential to have something here in the fall, potentially coinciding with Old Home Day, but maybe not. But just that Linda's going to explore that with the state when they do go mobile with their vaccine clinics. The, there were questions about what's going to happen for young people going back to school. I guess there's been no direction provided from the state that either Linda or any of us are aware of yet. We are hoping for that. Linda's definitely hoping for that, that it comes soon, so that we'll have what we need as a town going forward prior to school starting. We talked briefly about tick testing and how the testing in the state has switched up, and with not a lot new, other than it's being taken on by a private entity. Chief Sorrels and his folks are still continuing the COVID tests, and really, kudos should be given to he and the members of his department. I think it's, I think all members of the LEPC agree, this is a great thing that we have, we offer here in Carlisle. And we all appreciate what the members of our fire department are doing. And then the fire department from the LEPC front was also reporting about water embankments in Carlisle. Unfortunately, it was just nine inches of rain. We've had that, and members of the LEPC were appreciative of the members of the fire department that are going and doing those pumpouts. And unfortunately, from the LEPC front and fire department front there, self-contained breathing apparatus charging unit has failed, so they're in the process of working to get a different one. Our COA reported, the activities are robust. They're being very well attended. All members of the LEPC offered kudos to COA and Joan for the work that her folks are doing, both ensuring that people have basics like food, but also that activities that are fun are really ramping up. Lori Eckler and her Carlisle Neighbor Response Team continue to provide shopping for Carlisle residents that need it, and we're all appreciative of the work that they do. The Select Board gave a brief report about the potential setup of the ARPA group that will take a look at some of the money that's going to become available to Carlisle shortly because of the pandemic. In brief, that's what we had. Does anybody have any, any questions from the LEPC front?
Thank you.
Let me jump right to the next agenda item.
You may continue.
All right. Thank you. So I asked the Select Board to consider an appointment for part-time police officer. The appointee that I'm asking for tonight is a man named Gregory Balzotti, who lives in Littleton, but served 29 years at the Maynard Police Department, full-time. Part of the police reform legislation now is after July 1st. There is no such thing as part-time police officers. They all have to be full-time within the next three years, depending on the last letter, first letter of their last name. So while we're in the process of getting several of our members up to speed with full-time, it does help when somebody like Mr. Balzotti becomes available. He comes highly recommended from the Maynard Police Department, so he worked there full-time. He is limited in the number of hours he can work, but he is able to help us out, and comes highly recommended. He's a Chelmsford High School graduate, has a couple of associate's degrees from Middlesex Community College, and attended the Topsfield Police Academy for full-time. So this, this helps us. We've lost a few members, as you know, people that are not going to be able to do the full-time academy piece. So he helps us in a small way, because we are scrambling right now for members. So I would respectfully request that the Select Board consider offering Mr. Balzotti an appointment as a part-time police officer.
Would someone like to make a motion, and then we can have a discussion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the chief of police and appoint Gregory Balzotti, Littleton, Massachusetts, to serve as a part-time police officer with the Carlisle Police Department.
Second?
Any discussion or questions of the chief? Comments?
You had a pretty good presentation. Covered bases.
Luke?
Nope.
Good. Okay. Nathan?
No, I don't.
All right. Well, then let's go to a vote. Now, because David is remote, do we need to do a roll call vote with?
That's, yeah. He's participating remotely. Correct.
All right. So we're gonna.
Did David have any questions?
Oh.
I don't know if he heard.
Yeah, can he? David, do you have any questions about the part-time police officer? Can you hear me?
He's on the line.
Okay. Well, let's just vote then.
Okay. All right. Well, let's see. Do I still go first if I'm chairing the meeting? I guess I do.
Sure, we're going in alphabetical order.
Yeah, alphabetical by last name. Okay. Arnold I.
Oscar Lilloy.
Brown I.
Modell would be next. David, maybe you can ask him, Tim, if he's ready to vote?
David, are you ready to?
I had one question.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me or not?
Yes, we can hear you.
Loud and clear.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The only question I had was the budget, the impact on the budget.
There's, there's no impact. It's a, these, this position is funded. We're not going to, actually, the only thing we're going to have to do is buy him some equipment. The other stuff, we're going to transfer over. We have a firearm. We have the expensive stuff, in brief, but we will have to buy him uniforms that fit him.
I mean, but his salary, is his salary included? Is there budgetary impact?
Yes. I'm sorry that I did not say that right out of the gate. That is a budgeted item. He is at.
Okay, thank you.
Police officers.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
All right. So let's go back and just do that one more time. So we're going to take a roll call vote. Arnold I.
Oscar Lilloy.
Brown I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Excellent. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you all. I appreciate the time.
All right. So we're going to go to the contract for, the two contracts, actually, for the Greeno Dam construction. Tim, do you want to introduce this? I see that Sylvia is here, too, but I think probably it makes.
I don't want to step on Sylvia's toes. She knows more about this project, has been involved with it longer than any of us. If you'd like a brief outline of the project, my goal tonight is to ask the board to award both the construction contract and the engineering services contracts, both of which need some tweaking by town council. And she asked that if the board could make the award, it would come back to you in final form for signature, so you just may be making a vote to award tonight. But as far as the project goes, there's no one better than Sylvia to describe it.
Do you want, well, we've, we've only allocated five minutes for this, but if you want to come up and just give a two-minute overview, if you're game for that, not of, not about the contract, but just about what they'll be doing? Yeah. Thanks, Sylvia.
As you know, the project is to repair the Greeno Dam, so that we have a connection between one part of Greeno Dam and hundreds of acres of protected open space on the other end of Greeno Dam. And the project has been on my to-do list since summer of 2000.
Wow.
And we're finally getting to the point. So we've got all our permits. So we have, well, we went out for bid, and we are selecting the lowest bid. I assume that what they are going to do is what's been permitted. And as I told you this morning on the phone, I see my role at this point is to make sure this goes as smoothly as possible by making sure that people who own the land that are, that's the access to it, are in the loop. And I think we need to contact the folks that live on River Edge Road in Billerica, so, because most of the access and the trucking and stuff is going to be coming in from there. It's a very tight, close neighborhood, unlike what we have around here. And the number of times I've been in there, there are kids playing out in the street. It's not much of a backyard, because it's a river. So I think it's important to do that and to figure out the best hours of construction and noise, because noise travels over water very easily. So are there going to be Saturday hours? I don't know. But I think these are little items that need to be worked out so that we can have a project that when it's done, everyone is satisfied and happy, and no one's angry at Carlisle.
Great. I think you'll do a great job at that, Sylvia. Thank you.
The important thing is to know when it's going to start, because I also need to inform the Army Corps of Engineers. And I'm sure we've got everything taken care of there.
Mm-hmm.
We have their permit. I just, it's.
Right. Okay.
An idea of when he's planning to start, Tim?
Our engineers, Stevens Associates, presuming that the board votes to award both contracts, is setting up a pre-construction meeting with Bates &amp; Sons. So they'll talk about project schedule and all those sorts of things, very shortly.
And in, on, in the pre-construction, you probably should have the property owners that own the access, because there's a common driveway that.
That's one of the items that the engineers want to talk about. Yeah, they agree that that's important.
Yeah. Okay.
Or it's not easy to get to.
Right.
Go to Billerica to get there.
Yeah. If people live that come in from Billerica, they use the Greeno land, they need to have the trails, a workaround, sort of a detour, so that they can get onto the land without getting involved in the construction vehicles and construction activity. And then for anybody that wants to get from this side to this side, there need to be signs up with routes so that people know where to go. Anyway.
Yes.
I just have a quick question, if I may.
Sure.
So I'm sure this was asked, like, you know, when this was being talked about for a town meeting and everything, but, so this is repairing a dam. The dam's holding back a lot of water. What's like the worst thing that could happen in this? And you're like, what's the risk to the town?
I'm not starting it soon enough right now.
During construction.
During construction? Since there's going to be a cofferdam, that's probably the first phase of this, so that before they take out the failed spillway, there's a cofferdam that goes in. It's these piles that grow in, and it's permanent. That will hold back the pond, so that when they take them out, it doesn't flood out.
So they're putting something in place first to keep the water in before they work on the other part?
I hope that's what they're going to do.
Because that would be pretty bad if all of a sudden the pond was empty.
Yeah. That has happened in the past. The dam has failed at least twice. The last time was around 1995, but not at any of the infrastructure, just the earthen part blew out. So hopefully, everything will go smoothly. It is a dam, and it's at full pool right now. There's about this much space, two inches of space.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've had a lot of water.
Yes, we have. All right. Thanks a lot, Sylvia.
Thank you.
So let's have a motion, then, please. I guess we'll take them one at a time.
I move the Select Board vote to award the Greeno Dam Repair Project contract to R. Bates &amp; Sons Incorporated, LLC, 140 Pratt's Junction Road, Suite 101, Sterling, Massachusetts, in the amount of $447,000, and to authorize the chair or town administrator to sign contract documents.
So are we cutting out that last part there, Tim?
Yeah, I'm wondering, shouldn't we, for.
Because it's coming back.
Contingent, or is it?
Oh, yeah, no, that, that, that's right. Yeah, you don't have to.
To just.
The board, the board will say that.
Yeah.
So would we end?
Just to, just to award the contract, period.
After the number?
After the number.
Yeah.
And same thing to the other one?
And same thing for the other one.
Okay.
Okay.
So we've got a motion and a second. Did we get a second on this?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So any more discussion?
I just want to say that we also did, by the way, apply for a state grant and weren't successful in getting it, unfortunately. So.
All right. Roll call.
We made the effort.
Yes. Yes, we did. All right. Roll call vote. Arnold I.
Oscar Lilloy. Brown I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I move that the Select Board vote to award the engineering services contract for the Greeno Dam Repair Project to Stevens Associates Consulting Engineers, LLC, 60 North Hook Drive, Brentwood, New Hampshire, 03833, in the amount of $80,000.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So I guess, Tim, my only discussion is that I really do hope that when you have that pre-construction, that Sylvia is invited to that meeting.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. Why not?
She's at least notified when it's going to be, and then she.
It just hasn't been scheduled. I didn't mean to be mysterious about it, but yeah.
Yeah, it just didn't, I wasn't certain that, you know.
It's, it's going to happen.
That's in the plan.
Good.
I just wanted to be sure. That it is in the plan. Okay.
Destined meeting.
Good. All right. Let's move on, then.
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Roll call vote. Arnold I.
Oscar Lilloy. Brown I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Excellent. All right. Motion passes unanimously. So now we can.
Modell I.
Gotcha.
Now, you only get to vote once, David. I don't care if you are in a car.
All right. We're moving on, then, to the Highland Building part of the agenda. And John, would you like to come up to the mic? Thank you.
I have a presentation, so.
Yes, so we should probably.
Which is helpful for the, also, the public to see.
Yeah.
Are you putting it up on this screen?
I don't know which is the best screen to put it.
Are we doing this one?
This one would be this one. Would be the.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I've got it.
I think it's in download. I sent it to you also, right?
Yes, I, yeah, I've got it. Remember how we do this? It's so much easier with Zoom, right? You just put it on the screen.
Oh, dear screen.
You can't do hybrid Zoom meetings, I guess, right?
Oh, no, I think we can.
Yeah, we can.
All right. Hopefully, we've got the batteries in the.
And everything's probably.
John, take it away.
Well, it might take a minute. Haven't fired this thing up in a year, so.
So this is the first public meeting in the room?
In person.
This is the first, though.
Yeah. It's since March of 2020.
Last time it was in person, it was on the floor.
That's right. It went back again. It went into hibernation. Should we turn the lights down?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Then I can doze off. The professor won't see this. He knows that trick. Yeah.
I'm asleep.
That's too dark. No.
Four clickers. What do you have to do with the function? It's telling you function, and then what is it? Is it F? What one is it?
F7.
F7? No, F8. Oh, it's got my name spelled wrong.[1699.01] Oh, it's got my name spelled wrong. I know it's a little... One? Yeah, one, yeah. What's telling me now? F8 has the little... F8 has the whole thing, but yeah.
I need HDMI because the projector's on HDMI.
Is it, but this is...
It's coming in from the other camera.
All right. Let's see when the resolution shows up like that. Yeah, there you go, that's a good sign. All right, mark to the rescue. Well, I think it's thinking about it.
The TV on, close.
The TV, sorry. We got a flashlight. Okay, is it?
It's not plugged into the wall.
No, that's always the... Well, that's a... It's not plugged in.
Oh, geez.
It's okay.
It blinked.
Okay.
Oh, boy. That buzzes. Yeah, let's go. No. The plug, that, there it goes, okay, good. Okay. Let me go back. So... Let me go back to the beginning here.
Okay, I'm... Here we go. I'm John Valentine, 268 Fisk Street, and first of all, I, clearly, there was some miscommunication last time around in the select board meeting as you were considering this and that you wanted a presentation of where we are and what's going on and the request. And also, just want to welcome the new old select board member who was also a member of the Highland Building Committee, the second one. I was surprised to see that there, this is the fourth committee, and that I have been on all four, that my wife volunteered me, so, and so, you know, this is, I'm just part of the process. And so what we're going to talk about tonight is the cost estimates for renovations and also obviously address some of the misunderstandings that were just, you know, presented to you by the public about what we're doing and how we're doing it and our communications and work with the school committee. So here is obviously the old Highland, 2008, and here it is, the outside renovated, and here's where we stand, and we'd spent $400,000 on it. So the next slide is, so our charge, and the charge from you, and here is our committee, and we have people representing the town center, historical committee, and the school committee, obviously Chief Soros, and we have advising professionals, architects, who have helped us on this. Our charge is to figure out what to do with it. And by the way, this has been something we've been trying to figure out for over 30 years since I almost came here, and it's not been an easy one. We understand the issues of it being close to the school, 40 feet from the school, and being on property, town property that is managed by the school, and we understand there are all those access issues involved with that and how that works. The other part of this is, as you know, there's this whole master planning process that we're involved in, and we as a committee saw this, and as I presented to you back in February, as this is part of an overall puzzle of what do we do with the town facilities and how do we work and use them. So these two work together, and so that's, next slide. So what are we trying to do? As I said, this has not been an easy discussion and it's not something, it has lots of strong feelings across town. It is part, and we understand that, we've talked, we've met with the school, with the superintendent and Christine Lear, and had a long discussion with them, and a member of the school committee, and I'll come back to that in a second. We're trying to figure out where this, where Highland fits in in the whole facilities and to what extent it should be part of our future or not. And we need to figure out what the costs are and what's involved in renovating it or demolishing it and what those consequences are. And so that's our focus, so here, next slide. So here basically is the overall picture, which we presented to you as part of the master plan facilities review and talking about what are the incremental space needs going forward for a town growing to 6,000 or 6,500 people. And what you see is basically, you know, incremental space over what we have totals over 20,000. And some of that is the COA space, or whether you have a community center, some of it we've talked about is municipal housing, which is, as you know, has been talked about regarding the on-call fire. And so these are, these are the incremental space needs that we've talked about, identified the town has not approved them, but that's what they've thought about doing, and that is over 20,000 feet. So going, next one? So what we've done is looked at what Highland is and what would Highland be involved. And again, this cost estimate from a contractor to demolish it and then repair the site and put a parking lot or something else, it would probably cost between $300,000 and $400,000. The sort of architect that we've had on the municipal facilities committee that we've talked to, who has designed on police and fire stations around the state, basically, he said rough rules of thumb to, you know, to renovate us, something like Highland would cost between $2 and $3 million. Then we did a schematic design with our architects, two of our consulting architects, and said, okay, if we did housing and for four units there, again, these are rough rules of thumb, it's between 2.5 and 3 million, again, off a schematic design, and it's, and it's just architects sort of using the left-hand side of their brains and sort of saying, what is this going to cost? And then we've said, okay, and that's just a schematic design. Then we sort of said, okay, now if you weren't going to use it for that, but you're going to use it for offices, whether it be expansion of town offices or an extension of education, and there's been a proposal of using it as for education after school, education facilities, what would that cost? You'd have to have an elevator there, you'd have to be ADA compliant, so there are a bunch of other things, whereas with the housing, you would not, and that would probably cost around 3 million. And then the community center that you probably, those of you who've been around Carlisle for a while, remember that that was a town meeting vote, which was turned down. And there we had very careful cost estimates of what it was, it was about $3 million. And that's sort of where we're at, is sort of having a sense of the cost, which is kind of roughly speaking is between $2 and $3 million, and what we need to do is get to the details and figure that out. So, next slide. So again, it's kind of where does this fit into the overall puzzle? Incremental square feet that the town has said that they may need over the 10, 15 years, it's 15,000 feet. Then you've got the recreation municipal housing of 8,000, so it's over 20,000 feet, and we've got existing with the fire and the police and Highland at 20,000 feet. So again, this is a question of how much you might repurpose our existing facilities and how much you might build new. And that is, as you know, something that we're going through fairly carefully and town meeting is obviously looking at the, has authorized us to look at both the fire and police needs. And then, so that's, that's sort of the big picture. Then sort of what, what happens if you decided to build something new, demolish Highland, and this gets into the opportunity cost, and me being an economist kind of believe in that stuff. Basically, if you tear it down and then you suddenly said you need 7,000 square feet, it's probably going to cost you $400,000 to $500,000. So tearing Highland down, demolishing it, and then putting in a new space is going to cost you probably more than what you have now. And so, and there's, and also, as you'll see, from a sustainability standpoint, a lot of people feel that that's not the right way to go because you're actually using new materials and it's got a higher carbon footprint. So the next slide. Okay, so if those of you can read the print, you will actually recognize some of the names if you walk through Green Cemetery in the 1908 class or 1909 class. And 1949, the Soros aren't there yet, they graduated later, but there, there are other people who have used that building, and it's a beautiful building and it's an architectural gem. And so it's historic, but not in the historic registry, and for lots of reasons we chose not to do that. Using it and using old buildings has a larger, lower carbon footprint. We have stabilized the outside of the building and it's basically there and strong, so what we're trying to do is figure out if we renovate it, what it would cost, so. So here are the basic options that we're talking about, and as I said, we've had eight meetings as the Highland Building Committee. We've had a, two consultations with the school and with Christine Lear and the superintendent, and then also with a member of the school committee. And what we decided was, why not go to the school committee now? Was we don't have an actual plan set up to go forward, that we need to have details and what's involved, what would the structure be, what would be the land use, how do you control things, and sort of just go with it. Sort of these general concepts have raised as many questions that we haven't even begun to kind of go through, and we don't know really what's feasible. And that's really important, you know, because as, as you know, when you go to the school committee, they've got a tight agenda, they've got a certain amount of time, and so if you go, you want to sort of work through the details of what would, if you're going forward with either housing or offices, what would be involved, where's the parking, who controls the space? There are a whole bunch of set of issues that need to be thought through. And so there is no question that there would be, obviously, this has to be compatible with the schools because of its proximity, and there, and there's a total understanding of that. And so we have, we decided back in, I guess it was March, I think we had the meeting, and then, and then Chief and I met with Sarah Wilson, we talked about it further, so we've had two meetings, and we said we need to kind of work through those details, understand what the proposal is, what the cost is, all that stuff before we go to the school. And so the intention is totally to work closely with the school, make sure it works, work with the community, and most importantly, so we know what we're going to recommend. We're not at a point where we can recommend saying this is the way to go or not to go. And what we need is those, that information in detail. Next slide. So fortunately, during this time, we reached out to contractors and architects in town and identified a cost estimator, and if you, we won't go through the website, but Tochi is a very experienced building project manager, our architects know them and feel strongly about them. What they would do for $6,000 is a level two estimate, and I know I'd sent this to you earlier in the packet, but a lot of detail, breaking down what's involved. We've got the old cost estimate, we have a schematic design, and then we'd, and we'd have a site visit with them, and then a consultation, phone consultation, and then we could have some pushback, so we have a real sense of what's involved in the cost, both for housing and for offices and all that stuff. And that's what we really need to know what's feasible, because $2 million is very different than over $3 million or whatever, and that's what we're playing with. They're ready to go, and so that's, and we don't feel that we can really move forward with any proposal, any discussion unless we've got that information. What we've got is kind of seat-of-the-pants information, your basic rules of thumb. So that's, that's where we are. So what we want to do is proceed with those two cost estimates with Tochi, and they will have a site visit. They've sent us a sample contract, which obviously Tim would sign, not me, but you know, you're empowered, the Highland Building Committee is empowered to do this, and we need those steps so we can get to what is possible and make an informed presentation. So this goes back to the original charge, what do we do with Highland? Which is, as you know, has been talked about for probably 40 years, and at least, and so that's where we are. And as I said, that's what we, they think they can do this in the next two months, that we get that information, then we'd have the, then we try to, as a committee, come up with a plan, talk that through, meet with the school committee, and this all fits in with all the overall master planning process. So that's, that's where we are. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Oh, boy, you're broken.
Yeah, no. There we go. I guess I should get the lights.
Good thing there are rollers on here, huh? All right, well, why don't we get a motion on the floor, and then we can open it up for discussion? Who'd like to make the motion?
I move that the select board provide a sum not to exceed $6,000, excuse me, from available funds to the Highland Building Committee for the purpose of funding a consultant to provide cost estimates for possible reuse scenarios for the Highland Building.
Second? And it's been seconded, so let's open it up for discussion. We just go around the board, see who has a question or comment?
Well, I'm on the committee, so.
That doesn't prohibit you from...
No, but I have no comments. I mean, yeah, yeah.
All right. Kate or Nathan?
I have a quick question is, it says $6,000 for funds available to the Highland Building Committee. Where are those funds coming from? How are they, is this like from the old allocation from CPC?
More than likely it would be surplus capital funds, funds that were left over from, from previous projects.
Okay. So it's not something that previously had been allocated to Highland?
It wouldn't be new, yeah. It would not be new money.
Zero was allocated to us.
David, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a cue. Can you, can you hear me?
They can.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, so John, so the first question is, have you had any discussions with, with school committee about other uses of the land? If the, if the building was demoed, do they have any ideas about making a bigger park, playground, or some other use of the land as opposed to putting up a building or parking?
Not with the school committee, obviously, with Christine Lear is on our committee and with the superintendent, and we've not kind of gone through any of that discussion of what, what the school might want to use the land for, so no, we have not had the discussion.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that, that discussion needs to pay authorizing $6,000, so it's not, you know, we can take that up with the committee, but I think it's something, you know, in an analysis of alternatives, we should consider that the best solution may not be a building at all.
Correct.
The second question, John, is, is 500, 500, and Nathan might have asked, I couldn't hear, is 500 to 600 dollars per square foot like the normal cost for a municipal building these days? Is that, is that what we can expect?
I, I just...
In light of what we do?
Yes, I just checked that actually with our, our neighbor architect from Now, the Now Group, Suzanne Spinney, and with the prevailing wage, that's, yes, with a very, fairly simple construction, you're going to be talking to 500, 600 dollars per square foot.
Okay, so whether you build, kind of whether you, I think I heard you say, and John, if you can get closer to the phones, I can hear you. So it doesn't matter whether we renovate or we build new, we can expect that kind of cost, right?
No, if you looked at the presentation, the presentation had basically in the 300, $200 to $300 for renovation and the opportunity, and the opportunity cost is more close to 500.
I saw that, I saw that. So we work with the 200 to 300, I guess it's a question maybe, listen, I think we should spend the 6,000, I just want to make sure we're framed in what we're doing. And I think that the thought piece for Kate and the Affordable Housing Trust is, you know, what could you do with 200 to 3 million dollars if that was, if we spent that on the Affordable Housing Trust as compared with, you know, a renovation of Highland or really anything? You know, is that a more effective way to get more housing stock into the community? But as I said, all those three comments I had are not, I don't think are relevant to whether we pass the, excuse me, authorize the funding, and that's it. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Kate or Nathan, did you have anything more you wanted to ask about?
No, I, I don't have any questions. I, you know, what David said is a good question, but it doesn't have, doesn't devolve onto this, this decision, if that's for a later decision. My, my other, I think more important question though is, I'm, I am concerned about the management, if it's housing, the management of it going.
Yeah, no, and we have talked about that and that essentially we're thinking about, and again, this is just conceptual, we haven't kind of worked with a not-for-profit like Carlisle elderly housing that we have, that you work through a not-for-profit that would manage it, and it actually might be, you know, that might be the shell that you'd go through, a not-for-profit type of situation, that you set up housing that way, and then you have a whole management structure. And the important part is that people on the school committee and the school would be on that board, as would other town people, so that there is a, there is input and it's not, it's not a sort of arms-length, but it's a, you know, arms-around sort of situation.
Yeah, that is not without its problems, as we have discovered in our other example of that.
I guess I do have something if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
It's me. So I guess, I guess I look at it as there's really three options, right? There's, one is demolish it, number two is do something that's long-term, where do we want it to go? And I think that there's a third option of how can we get it used a little bit? You know, is there something we can do where we're putting a sprinkler system in there so that we can use it, but maybe we're not using the top floor so we don't have to get it ADA compliant? And, you know, I think I'd walk through that a couple of years ago, no, last year, I think, a couple of years ago, COVID...
as would other town people, so that there is a there's input and it's not it's not a sort of arms-length, but it's a, you know, arms-around sort of situation.
That is not without its problems.
No, of course not.
As we have discovered in our other example of that.
I guess I do have something if I.
Sure, go ahead.
It's me. So I guess I look at it as there's really three options, right? There's one is demolish it. Number two is do something that's long-term. Where do we want it to go? And I think that there's a third option of how can we get it used a little bit? You know, is there something we can do where we're putting a sprinkler system in there so that we can use it? But maybe we're not using the top floor, so we don't have to get it ADA compliant. And, you know, I think I'd walk through that a couple of years ago, no, last year, I think, a couple of years ago, COVID blended over a year with John Mativier. And like, you know, can you make like that first floor inexpensively ADA compliant and put a bathroom there? And I think that there really was something that could be done that maybe is just kind of like not going for everything all at once, but getting the building used again, getting it safe again by having the sprinkler system in there and and getting a real value out of it, but maybe not going all the way to a $3 million, you know, dollar project.
So on that, we actually looked at that in the 2013-14 Highland Building Committee III, which I don't think you were on.
Oh, I was not.
Which is which is basically should could you do a stepwise-type construction and renovation? And the answer from a code basically is no. It does not that cost-effective, basically because you have to put the elevator in.
I think that you don't if you don't use the third floor.
Nope.
Okay.
You have to and you have and you have to have an elevator in if you're using that. You know, you got the premier estage and, you know, just, you know, whatever.
The Red Chaussee.
Yeah, right, yeah, Red Chaussee, right, exactly.
All right, you've worked.
But and also, Nathan, the building's been going backwards at a kind of a rapid clip recently.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just throwing out kind of this other option.
I understand. I just but even the COA has taken their hard goods out of the basement because it's not an adequate space for storage.
Mm-hmm. I just worry that we go to town meeting, we come up with an idea that $3 million, we go to town meeting, and it's shot down again, then what do we do? Right?
Right, when that gets into the old financial.
I can talk to you about it later.
But that's a whole other set of discussion.
I have one question for you, John. Just when you met with the superintendent and the current school committee chair, and then you said recently you'd met with Sarah Wilson, what is what is the current, you know, response that you're getting? Are there current thinking about the Highland Building?
Obviously, they're three different people, so it varies. And so I would say essentially, the superintendent says, until we have more information, taking it to the full school school committee does not make sense. We need to kind of flesh that out. And Christine, when she was chair, certainly agreed with that. And but keeping them informed, and Sarah had lots of other questions and was understanding what the some of the housing needs were and so those issues. But essentially, there was an agreement that we need to kind of really figure out what we're going to do, what we might recommend, what's involved, and all the sort of details that would naturally come up. And you'd have to have a whole packet. Because as you know, school committee could at most maybe have two 30-minute sections in two school committee meetings.
Yes.
To discuss it.
Okay, good, thanks. I'm glad to hear that you that that's where the school committee is, and they're looking forward to a.
Yeah, and I've been copying them on what's been going on and keeping them in the loop. So, you know, the and the new, I don't think they've elected a new chair yet, but.
Yeah, I don't know if they have yet. Okay, good. If we don't have any more discussion, I think we're ready to take a vote. All right, hearing none, we're going to do a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lilo, I.
Brown, I.
Odell, I.
Reed, I. All right, the motion carries unanimously.
Odell, I.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, John.
John.
And thank you to the committee for all the hard work you're going through for yet the fourth time. All right. David, can you hear me? This is Barney. Tim, maybe you can ask him how far away he is. We were supposed to, I'll move down, I'll take something else.
I hear you.
Yeah, Barney asked, where are you?
How far away?
How far away time-wise?
Oh, I'm far away. Just keep going.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm far away.
Okay. Well, we'll hold off on the elections till the end if you think you're going to make it. I'll just keep cheering. Okay, then let's go to the item eight.
Yeah, just keep going. I don't count, I, this is far away, I was far away, so.
Okay.
Let's keep going.
Is everybody else comfortable if we just go on to eight and then we'll do the elections at the end?
I think we're close to eight o'clock.
Yeah, okay. Let's go to the ARPA committee. And Tim, I'm going to ask you to just give us a quick overview of what you're proposing as the charge. We've all had it.
Sure.
So thank you.
I revised it somewhat since I first presented it to the board. And I would propose a three-member committee comprised of a select board member, a finance committee member, and a one-citizen representative. I attached the both the interim and the final guidance from the government. I think we can all see that it's it's going to be a bit of an undertaking to find projects that are that are eligible for the town. I'm also recommending that the town administrator, finance director, police and fire chiefs, other department heads act as resources to the committee. Although I think I pointed out, I did consult other communities and finding out how they were setting up similar committees. And and a lot of those committees, you know, don't share my reservations with having department heads on the committee. They they figured that the eligibility is pretty tightly drawn and the public safety agencies are going to be in the mix for eligible projects. And they know the the needs of the town best. And, you know, why not have them part of that discussion? So there's really, you know, a number of ways to go at it. I took a stab at a at a charge, and it's really designed to to keep us keep us out of trouble and that we only would fund eligible projects and in the categories that are described in the legislation. And that we, one of our goals is, you know, the benefit or the added value to the town of Carlisle, in addition to it being an eligible project, you know, what are we really, are we getting the real, really the best value out of this program for the town? And there'll be, you know, a lot of record-keeping, and the new accountant's going to be a very busy woman. I think Priscilla smiled a little bit when she saw how long the guidance was for the program, knowing that she's going to be departing in September. But that, again, that's my my draft at the moment would be three members. You know, I think, you know, if you've got a small, tight committee that, you know, decisions tend to get made rather than when you've got a big board, it's kind of hard to. Sometimes it can be a little cumbersome if you've got too many people at the table. And this is going to be pretty much vetting projects to recommend to you as the select board. So I think they're going to want to be somewhat nimble and able to recommend a program of projects to you that make financial sense, that they're eligible, and also, you know, provide benefit to the community. So that's the current draft. It's subject to revision again, of course. And we, you know, we can take our time with this charge because, you know, we've got got some time before the program rolls out. And we've got a few years really actually to spend the money as well. So that's what I recommended the board at this point. And I think we can talk about the charge going forward. But the composition, I would recommend those three, the select board, finance committee, and citizen. If the board is comfortable expanding that to include department heads and the finance director and town accountant, that that's certainly certainly valid as well. As I said, a number of towns are doing it that way. They're not, you know, excluding those groups as voting members. They think they add they add value to the community, to the committee, rather.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
So let's.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I actually did read this stupid thing and.
The guidance?
Yes. On page 122, it says, "The Treasury expects to provide technical assistance to defray the costs of administration of fiscal recovery funds to further mitigate burden." Was it your sense, Tim? I don't know if you, that we could actually charge some administrative time to this to the ARPA funds? I mean, that we could actually get some, you know, because if our town accountant needs.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was that was kind of a little bit of the drawback with the previous program is that it all sort of fell on the accountant to.
This doesn't explicitly say that you can actually charge that administrative assistance.
Our understanding is that you could hire, you know, you know, your auditors to do the financial reporting end of it. And then it wouldn't necessarily fall on town staff to get it right.
Because I think that would be important, otherwise it's.
You wouldn't want to make a mistake, you know, with federal reporting and then, you know.
Yeah, right.
Our understanding is that it can be spent on, you know, consulting fees and, as you say, administrative expenses. And actually, the hiring of, you know, employees, did you know that? A number of the bigger cities, I think Somerville's one, they're advertising for their ARPA coordinators.
Okay.
They've posted the jobs already, so.
Yeah. All right, so we can then charge that back.
Yes, we can.
That's an important.
Yes, it is, yeah.
But I think we should take advantage of that.
Other comments, questions? What we, you know, we're not voting tonight on the actual charge, which we can, we should discuss a little further and see if, you know, there are any sort of adjustments or changes we want to make. But, Tim, what I'm hearing from you is that we may want to decide tonight what the makeup of the committee is going to be.
Right, and how, whether you want to expand it from what I was suggesting or, you know.
Yeah.
And so it's not clear to me, Tim, what you think about whether or not we should expand it.
Well, I, my initial thinking was that it was better to to use the public safety department heads and school superintendent as resources to advocate, you know, vigorously for their own projects, but not to have a vote. And, you know, then naturally, you'd want to vote for your projects. And, you know, you know, maybe, you know, you'd vote for other eligible projects, maybe you wouldn't. But I think most communities say, well, you know, there are going to be so few eligible projects. And these are the people that know what the town needs, that, you know, maybe maybe there'd be some advantage to having, you know, your your police chief, your fire chief, your school superintendent as part of the committee. You know, they're all, you know, is going to want to, you know, to weigh in, certainly. And then I think they had the opportunity, whether they were, you know, part of the committee. I mean, I think the committee would listen to them because they've got credibility.
Then, as you point out, if they're on that, then you've got different quorum issues and, you know, harder to get things.
Yeah, nice about a three-member committee, because two is a quorum and, you know, it, you don't have to convince eight people of, you know, anything. It's, I generally think smaller is better. When you're putting a subcommittee together, you know, you can get to a decision quicker. But this will be the group that's advising you as the select board. And you'll have the final call if you think they're all wet, you know, you can say, you know, support, you know, go back to the drawing board and bring us new projects.
What if we had somebody that, you know, was was a staff member but was part of the LEPCE, LEPCE committee? And that was presented, that was presented by them saying, hey, we want to have, this is the person who's going to represent us?
The LAPC?
LAPC, yeah.
Ah, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, so.
Adding one more member there than the LAPC.
And that would be a staff member, though. But representing, so it would either be Brian or John or, you know, somebody that that committee decided would be their representative. Because they've just gone through the whole thing.
That's true.
Right, so they're going to, you know, they have a really good view into across all the departments what's going on, right? Because they've been meeting, had been meeting weekly.
Right, but even if you put both chiefs on, I mean, that only brings it up to five. Not volunteering you for more stuff, but but that only brings it up to five, right?
What about the health board? You know, then I think I think you get, well, EOH should then be on it. I'm being.
I'm not sure, because I'm not sure what facilities they necessarily have.
No, but they.
But their expenses.
Their expenses. The ARPA thing is all for, you know, all the services and the.
It's a slippery slope.
It is.
That's why I was thinking is just there's one representing, representing all of them.
That's a better way of handling it.
Yeah.
And how and how would that, if it's a staff person, then it would be a an employee that also serves on the LAPC?
Well, there are, well, there's.
No, because you, I, and.
The chief is the chair.
On the LAPC.
Maybe it makes sense to have a chair, right?
Right. He's the coordinator, right?
Yeah.
The emergency management, right, coordinator, is that what?
I've forgotten his title, yeah, but.
Yeah, I think it's coordinator, yeah.
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 David, do you have any thoughts on this? Mind, I think maybe you can hear better when you're speaking.
Did you, did you hear me? Did you hear it?
Yes.
I, no, I'm fine with three. I'm fine with a three-member committee and then calling in the experts, the department, as even.
Yeah, I'm thinking that.
That's it.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning that way, too. Just I'm thinking partly it's just the three-member group and no, no particular, you know, oar in the water for any particular department or.
I agree, and they're, they will be notified of every single meeting. And I would say expected to be there.
Yeah, absolutely. I would think that.
More than invited, sort of expected to be there to submit the the items and give advice.
So what what is the proposal now? Because this says one select board member, one finance committee member, and one school committee member. You're saying it's select board, finance.
That's an older version. So in your packet, you have, the first page is an old version. But go to the next time you see the memo. Yeah, and that one has the correct, the latest, yeah. So it's one select board member, one finance committee member, and one citizen. And I did check in with Jim Dar earlier in the week, and they're meeting tomorrow night. And he said he he thought this seemed reasonable, and they would discuss it tomorrow night, or Thursday night. Do we want to take a vote on the committee membership tonight? Again, there's not a rush if, but we could go ahead and do that tonight, and then if.
Just vote in on it all at once, the charge and the.
Want to wait and do it all at once?
Yeah, Tim has a sense that if this is fine as the makeup.
Yeah, it's not time-sensitive.
Okay, so the sense of the board at this point seems to be that we're going to go with this three-member group, but we'll wait till we have the charge fully kind of discussed and ready to go. And then we'll vote on it at a future select board meeting. Do you think, Tim, we should be thinking about the next select board meeting? Or because there's not a rush, do you want to wait and put it on for one of the August meetings?
That, well, we may have just the one August meeting if one session is with Mark Way. So certainly, yeah, then probably for, you know, the other, the other meeting, yeah, I think.
The other August meeting?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So when we get, just a reminder to all of us, when we get to that.
Maybe we can get Priscilla to be the citizen.
I know she'll say no.
I doubt it.
I was thinking of Bill.
Or Bill.
Oh, Bill, on every board we have, right? But just when we get down to the town administrators report, we're going to review briefly the agenda for the next meeting. So just keep that in the back of your mind as we go along here. But we'll talk about bringing the ARPA committee back for that second meeting in August. Okay, great. Let's move on to the personnel committee, personnel policies. And thank you, Kate, for all the work that you and Donna and have done on this. I did a little bit, but you really took the lead on it, which is great. And so we're, what we're doing is we're looking at revisions to the town of Carlisle's personnel policies. There are a lot of policies and a fair number of revisions. Kate went through and identified some of the kind of key questions or changes that are in these. And what I thought we could try to do tonight, we're not going to get through all of this tonight, but we've set aside, what did we set aside, 25 minutes, I think? Actually, 45 minutes, yeah. So we're, and you know, gosh, we're pretty close to, no, except that we skipped those. So we're, and you know, gosh, a pretty close, oh, except that we skipped those. Anyway, I'm talking, I'm rambling. Anyway, yes, so let's say we've got, you know, 30 to 40 minutes on the personnel policies. And so we'll, I expect we'll dive into them tonight, but we will then continue at a subsequent meeting. So Kate has provided an outline here of what, some of the key questions or changes. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Kate, to walk us through that and we'll see how far we get.
So as you all know, we have a new personnel bylaw. A lot of the, the old bylaw was really policies. And so now they're kind of, some of the things came out of the bylaw, you know, are in the policies. They were actually also in the policies, but it was very weird to have things both in the bylaw and in the policies. So now the two are totally separate, which I think is a big improvement. Some of these things, these questions are very easy. One, I went through all the comments and everything. And so some of them are just things that we have to plug in, like the first, number one, where we need to include the name of persons to whom the complaints of sexual harassment can be made. And Tim, being the head of personnel, seemed like the likely choice. And I talked to him about it and he's willing. But Donna was saying that sometimes women would prefer to talk to another woman, and she suggested maybe Jen. So I've asked Tim to ask Jen, and I have also asked Jen if she'd be willing, and they are. So if we were, if we thought that that was a good idea, we could just incorporate that and we could take that off our list. So I don't know, do you want to do these all at once?
Anybody want to discuss that, or should we just, are we comfortable with that?
Okay.
Yep, all right. David, if you can hear me, just speak up if we go through one of these and you want to comment, let me know.
I will, but I'm trying to just listen.
Okay.
I think they did a fine job.
Good, thank you.
So the next, the next question is, do we want to include a non-sexual harassment policy? It's not required by law, but Donna said it was recommended. And if so, again, it's, I've already told Donna, put it in because it's easier to take things out than to put them in later. And if so, then we need a non-sexual harassment, names of persons to whom those complaints are made. And I'm recommending, I would recommend Tim's name be in there again. And if it's non-sexual harassment, I doubt that we need a second person, but that's, you know, a free discussion.
And the, the actual policy that's listed here, is this a boilerplate that Donna has provided to us?
Yes.
The town council, okay.
I'm sorry, this is really hard to read.
It is, unfortunately, okay. Well, so the first question is, do we want to include a non-sexual harassment policy? And I would say yes. Anybody opposed to having that in the personnel policies? All right, so then I would.
I mean, ultimately, does it cover everything, any form of harassment other than?
Sexual harassment, yeah.
So like Nathan on the board, right, we could.
When he harasses us?
Exactly, yeah. Publicly, yeah. But I mean, that's the idea behind it, right?
That's right. That's right, other kinds of harassment.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, you know.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah.
So I think it's important, especially in this day and age.
I do, too.
So, and so if we're all in agreement, then are we also in agreement to let Tim be the fall guy on this one? The butt of the.
And you're, you're accepting this challenge?
Accepting, yeah, the responsibility.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, is it confusing to have, oh, if it's sexual harassment, I go to one person? If it's, I mean, I'm just wondering, does it make sense just to have it just be one person if you think there's harassment? And it always be just that one person, so there's no, it's just clear?
Well, in it, it says.
Somebody may think, oh, I'm not sure if this was non or was sexual harassment or, you know.
I see what you're saying.
It's just clear, if you think there's any form of harassment at all, you're going.
Go to this person.
Yeah.
Or this, I guess, yes, still offering the option of a woman or a man.
Yeah, but you should also have an alternate, too, because what if the harasser is.
Is one of those two positions.
Yeah, no offense to him. But also, too, there needs to be an option if somebody's harassing, right, Tim or Jen? But it's more so if, say, Tim is doing the, right? So, yeah, I think having two, nice, I think having two makes sense.
David, you're having fun.
I think that's Tim's ringtone.
Oh, okay.
When Dave calls, it's only when Dave calls.
Unfortunately, I don't remember which.
All right, so, well, it's here, it's on, it's 14.1.
Yeah.
It is hard to read, though.
Yeah.
But, right, so, all right, so how would we sort that out, then? We would say.
Jen with Tim as a backup or any one of us if somebody didn't feel comfortable going to them.
Right, yeah.
Because ultimately, we're responsible, right?
If we were the ones they were complaining about, yeah, they'd have to have someone.
Well, then you guys would need a place to go, too, right? Which would be us, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well, if somebody's harassing you.
Jen's harassing you, right? You've come to us.
That's right.
So that seems to make sense, yeah, and maybe we ask Donna how to.
Fix this.
Yeah.
So Jen, Tim, or a board member.
Member of the board, yeah.
And then it's Tim, Jen, a member of a board.
Yeah.
I would say probably the chair.
I think any member of the board.
Yeah, because the person might feel more comfortable with one or another.
Gotcha, 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 okay, I will get that changed. We need an ADA coordinator. And again, I don't see, Tim, do you want to designate somebody or are you going to take that on?
No, I can, I can, I thought, I thought it was the ADA coordinator, not that, yeah.
Well, it wasn't in the old policy and it wasn't in the bylaw, so I'm trying to write it in.
In all these cases, we're listing it as the personnel director.
Yeah.
Yes, right, I know.
Nobody, yeah, by position, by title, gotcha.
Exactly, but I'm just.
Yeah, no, I get it.
My shorthand.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to add?
Ah, the paid holiday.
As another paid holiday, or do we want to delete something else? And I'm suggesting Columbus Day, because Columbus Day is, is a state and not a federal holiday. And the question also is, what is the cost to add another holiday if we don't eliminate a holiday?
I think this needs to be a decision a little bit more than just the time we have.
I agree, and we need more information.
I don't know what, how it might impact contracts we have.
Yeah, there'd have to be bargain with the unions as well.
Yeah.
You could make a policy for the non-union people, but then you'd have to deal with both of your unions.
Right, and so that might just be an extra holiday, I might hate to add another holiday, but, you know, it's like, how do we, I don't know. I think that's something we really want to kind of get a feel from the staff on.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
And understand the ramifications from a contractual perspective.
Yeah, and also I would want us to be consistent with both groups. I wouldn't want to have one policy for non-union and then have the.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Contract employees have a different.
The thing is that we've already voted to accept Juneteenth as a holiday for town. So I just want to make sure that gets put into the policy somewhere in some form. So I think we could take that, what I would, because I'm kind of anxious to get over, not tonight necessarily, but in the next four weeks or so, I'm anxious to get the policies adopted. I could take, we could take that particular one out. I think it's better to have, or have the wrong policy and change it and have it adopted at least so that we all have, so we have a policy, you know what I'm trying to say?
You mean the overall personnel policy and just take out this question if we.
I just don't want to hold the whole policy up for one question.
Yeah, for one thing.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, why don't we, let's see how, where we get on answering some of the questions.
I'm going to put hold on this.
Yeah.
The current policy says that Saturday holidays are observed on the preceding Friday. And according to council, this is not the norm. Typically, Saturday holidays are observed on the Saturday. And it's only if a holiday falls on a Sunday that it's moved to the following Monday.
So you're saying that typically, Fourth of July is on a Saturday, staff don't get a day off?
That's right.
Where does that happen?
Well, I think she means typically in other towns. I'm not saying typically in this town, because here, in this town, they get Friday off. So.
Right, so I think we need to look at this one as well in the light of.
I think we can look at four and five together.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, too, that the whole question of holidays and holiday, yeah, and the Saturday holidays.
All right, section 14 is a whole brand-new boilerplate from DOT about, I'm sorry, that's non-sexual harassment policy.
Yeah, wait, maybe.
It's okay, we get the idea.
Okay, anyway, substance abuse, a certain number of visits for substance abuse. And it's in the boiler, it is in the DOT policy.
Is it the alcohol and drug testing, drug-free workplace? That's like page 26, yeah, 19 and 20, it looks like.
How much does a visit cost?
That's something we'll have to find.
19 and 20.
Probably a specialist to co-pay rather than a regular one, would be my guess. So it's $40, $45, something like that.
19.
Things have changed since the last, since I wrote my memo. I think she must have reformatted everything again.
So this is, it's three days off and three days of paying for the.
No, it's just, it's three visits, it's paying just for the visits to the substance abuse person. So it could be an hour after work, for all we know. But it's a professional substance abuse counselor.
So this is the substance abuse professionals, yeah.
To be able to know if three days is enough or not.
But I thought there was, didn't she, didn't Donna say that the, the towns that she'd reviewed, it was somewhere between three and five?
Yes.
Yeah, that that was the sort of standard or common number of visits. And have we been, this is a whole new section?
It's a whole new section.
So we have not offered anything like this in the past, is that right, Tim? Yeah.
And you're supposed to, I mean.
Yeah, and I think it's an important thing that we should do.
And I'm sorry, I didn't read the entire thing. I'm sorry, but I've confessed that. But I did read this summary.
And I gave you the Cliff Notes.
That's what happens when you give a Cliff Notes, right? So is it specific as to whether or not they're like during work hours or after work hours?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, it's just, I think the co-pay for the visit. But you know what, I will check, you know what, I'm going to check that.
I just don't want there to be a fight about this in the future, you know, we're trying to do a good thing. And I'd have no problem, actually, if it's during work hours. But I just think we should be specific, you know, either it's sick time that they're taking or.
I think it's page 44, right, Employee Assistance Program, is that what it falls under? Page 44?
Employee Assistance Program, okay. I can't read this. The SAPs, okay, that's the substance abuse professionals. We're supposed to give them, you know, the names of the SAPs, information regarding this town employee assistance program.
Yeah, here, and it's at the top of page 45, yes, so it is in this section where it says the town will pay up to three visits to an SAP for those who voluntarily refer themselves to the program. Any additional visits must be paid for by the employee or through the employee's health insurance plan if applicable.
So it looks like we're paying the whole thing, not just, just the co-pay.
How much is that?
Yeah, I wonder, so let me ask, actually, Tim, could you find out how much that is?
Yeah, I think it's $45, but I'll find out.
Yeah, because is this something the insurance would cover? So we would just pay the co-pay, right? We wouldn't have to pay the full amount, I would think, right, yeah. Yeah, so it's really two questions, right? Does insurance cover?
It's specific, like what if somebody says, but I don't want it to be, I don't want to record it, you know, I want it to be anonymous, I don't want it to go through my health insurance.
Yeah.
What do we do?
We pay the three and that's it, because the rest of it, they have to pay for.
Right, I know, that's why if it's not through the insurance, it just may be more. I'm not sure we want to assume that insurance is covering it, because somebody may want it to be anonymous. Right, it's a benefit we're offering.
Yeah, but yes.
So can we say, well, if you're not going to go through your insurance company, we're not going to offer you the benefit?
No, I don't think we can say that, I just don't, why wouldn't somebody want to go through the insurance? What's the anonymity piece?
Yeah, maybe somebody, maybe somebody just doesn't want it on their health record. I don't know, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, but insurance in and of itself is private, too, right? So, I mean, like, you know.
Well, actually, if this.
You can't see your spouse's stuff either, I mean, like, it's, it's pretty anonymous.
Okay, if you don't think it's an issue, I'm just.
Yeah, I, well, I don't think it is, but, I mean, maybe we could look into that.
The thing is, though, it says, we'll pay it for those who voluntarily refer themselves to the program. So if they don't want to have anybody know about it, they won't voluntarily refer themselves to the program and we won't pay for it, then, right?
Right, that's the program, though, not the insurance. I'm not trying to, I'm just.
But that's, but then their insurance is that we don't have any control to what they do with their insurance.
No.
Okay.
But if they don't do any of these things, we can fire them because they have to do this stuff.
Right, the whole, the rest of it, right.
Right, I guess I would fall on the, a little bit more relaxed of just understanding how much is the visit and we'll pay for the visit, depending upon how much that visit is and take away all those questions.
Except they have to come to us to ask for us to pay for it.
Yep.
Okay.
Because this makes it pretty clear, it says that we will pay for up to three, the town will pay for up to three visits, and if they voluntarily refer themselves. And then it very specifically says, any additional visits must be paid for by the employee or through the employee's health insurance. So it doesn't, it suggests that those first three visits, those first three visits are on our dime.
It's on our dime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think that's a very reasonable way, yeah. That seems very reasonable to me. So can we move on, then? We're just going to check out the cost.
To summarize, I think what I'd be inclined to do is pay for the whole visit. Understanding first how much it costs, pay for the whole visit and going for five.
Oh, and going for five?
Yeah. I mean, this is an important thing that we can do for our employees.
All right.
How do others feel about five visits?
I don't know how much it is yet, so I don't know that I'm saying go for five.
Right, but if, depending on the cost, yeah. Actually, I'm with you on that, I think if somebody has a difficulty, that's reasonable.
For our next meeting, we need to know how much the visits cost and then we'll decide on three or five.
And we could always set a ceiling, I suppose, right, on the cost? I mean, suppose it depend, it could depend on who you go see, right?
And we go to three.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, next question is, do we want to establish a sick leave bank rather than having our existed extended sick leave policy? So a sick leave bank, what happens is, if you accrue a lot of sick leave and you get up to the, you bump up on the max sick leave, you know, you could donate a day or two, and usually there's a max, I think it's up to usually three, depending on who you or where you're working, CCHS has one of these. You can donate it to a sick leave bank. And then if somebody else, let's say, gets cancer or something and needs more sick leave than they have in their own account, they can file a request to be covered by the sick leave bank. And if there's enough days in the sick leave bank, and if the board, there's usually a committee, it's usually one of the union members or the, you know, it's a small board that usually takes those requests under advisement. And they say yea or nay whether they can have those sick leave days. In a way, it is a long-term endless, you know, insurance policy in certain respects, which costs us something, but not as much as, you know, actually, some other things could cost us. I think it's a nice benefit for employees. It's different from the extended leave. Extended leave, you also get to your end, but, and you also have to apply for it, right, Tim? And then still, somebody has to decide, but then that really comes out of our pocket. It's, in a way, it's not, to me, unpaid sick leave that's been put into a bank is still kind of like, it's a different kind of an expense, I suppose.
I think it's still the same kind of. I, I think it's still the same kind of expense, right? Because you still have, you're still paying somebody who's not here.
Yeah, you are.
So it's still direct pocket out of, but, but it certainly benefits them. Are there, are there certain types of sicknesses that are eligible?
I think it depends on what it is, I mean, if you had a terrible car accident.
Right, or if somebody, you know, if somebody's sick a lot, can they apply?
No, it's for, no, I don't, it's not for that, it is for a long-term
Yeah, right.
Thing, it's not if, you know, you're the kind of guy, or, you know.
Right, no, and so.
Do everyone four days a month.
Yeah, so that's the thing, there would need to be a gatekeeper, but then, right, and we'd have to kinda set up parameters for that gate, so, so it's not just their decision?
Yes.
We kinda have to have.
Absolutely.
You know, and then ultimately, somebody could appeal, right? And then they come to us, sort of thing, right? If, if something isn't in that.
Also, we could run, there could be not enough days to cover them either.
Right.
I mean, if there haven't been enough donations for whatever reason.
Right. Yeah, no, I, um.
Yeah, I just wanna be, so there is definitely a cost, because otherwise, the sick leave just goes away, right? But now this keeps the sick leave on the books for the town. What, what is the alternative, what's the existing extent, how does it work now?
I'm gonna let Tim explain that.
Is that, I was looking at that myself. Does that refer to the short-term disability policy? That, I mean, that's a voluntary.
The sick leave bank, well, it's on page fifty-one. Fifty-one and fifty-two, fifty, yeah, fifty-one, fifty-two.
Admiration for you for being able to read that, Kate.
Well, I didn't. I was reading it on my thing, and then I printed out without all this garbage over here. No, it's got struck, stricken out, there should be something with strikeout.
Yeah, that's what I.
So it's just like a short-term disability you're thinking, Tim?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking. I'm not seeing the language that was struck out, but.
I'm not seeing it either, but.
So this would be a totally new thing.
Employees can purchase, voluntarily purchase a short-term disability policy.
Oh, that's different, that's totally different.
Yeah, no, that.
Sick leave.
Yeah. I mean, I think you could have a sick leave bank in addition to that, that wouldn't be.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Isn't, isn't it more expensive than a sick leave bank? It may, have we looked at the cost of just providing an LTD policy and a fixed number of sick leave? I think Mass requires a fifty-six dollars of sick leave per employee per year, or something like that. So you have a, but those are expensive days that come back to other people. You know, have we looked at that, I guess, a little question? Because LTD is pretty inexpensive.
Yeah. All right, let me, you know what, let me see if I can find the old section, because we did have something, we had something called extended sick leave. And it was not like an, was not a policy. You had to come and say, you know, I need more days than I own in my bank account here. And I think then maybe you had to pay them back or something like that, as you, after that.
Yeah, twenty-four dash five is, is extension of six, sick leave, right?
Oh yeah, there it goes, there it is, sorry, thank you.
That's not stricken.
It's not stricken.
No, okay.
It should be, if we do this.
This is just, the personnel board can decide to grant it.
Right.
Right.
Oh, and the comment there says, Kate has asked if we wanna establish a sick leave bank.
Now, was it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That, that was my question.
Got it.
Twenty-four point five seems dangerous.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I thought a sick leave bank was a better bet, and I think it's.
I think looking into what short-term disability would be, would be another.
Yeah, short-term disability, long-term disability, and.
Okay, Ted, who would do that, would that be, Tim, or would that be the Insurance Advisory Board?
You know, I, I can take that up with the, the benefits person.
Okay.
Okay, the long-term disability.
Yeah.
Or short-term disability.
Or short-term, yeah.
Disability. And, and bank, okay, so that.
Yeah.
Tim, you'll get us some information about that.
I will.
All right. Then we wanna, military leave. There is a twenty-six point oh. General law, chapter thirty-three.
Oh, here it is, page fifty-three.
Yeah. And question is, do we want to adopt that, or do we wanna just leave what we have?
It says, it depends on what the law was when we accepted it, it would have been by a vote of town meeting.
Yeah, and I checked, and we have not accepted it.
Okay.
How does what we're offering match with what the law?
It's not as good. The, the law is more generous.
I guess we'd need to know what that meant.
Okay, I can, I'll get that law for you. Mind you, we don't have very many. It'd be have to be a town employee who's in reserves and then just deployed or something.
Also, I think that we have it in some of our contracts, don't we? Some of our union contracts? Maybe we could match, take a look at that language, make sure we don't go down the wrong, we don't contradict something there.
Okay, yeah, so could you?
I think, I think it's in the police, or maybe it's in the.
Maybe the police, 'cause they tend to be the ones that are in the reserves.
Yeah, might be the school though, I think it's one of the.
Yeah, I wanna say it's in the school too, yeah.
The thing is also, I think there's something in, as I recall, in this general law thirty-three about saving the job for a longer time than what we have in here. Because, and I frankly feel that that's very important, that those guys that get, you know, shipped overseas don't have to worry that when they come back, they don't have a job.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent.
I mean, I know I'm biased, 'cause I have a kid in the, you know, but. All right.
Yeah.
So we need to look at that, so that's not ready. And I'm willing to take, honestly, I think all of these, if we had to even take them out of the policy and do the rest of them, then we put these back in. Okay. Thirty, a small necessities leave.
And that sort of goes with number eleven, right? The, if we add the small necessities leave, you're saying, should we strike the paid personal time off?
Right.
So that's thirty-one.
Now, I did, Donna put the small necessities leave in. I don't know where she got it, or, or if it, maybe it was already in there? But at any rate, it's, it's a very weird thing, and I, I thought it was new, I don't think it was in our old one. And it, you know, like, you could take your son or daughter, if they're under eighteen, but if your, son or daughter's twenty years old, you have to take them to, to have their wisdom teeth, you know, extracted, you can't do it under this. And I thought, I didn't care for this, this whole small necessities leave. And I think it honestly needs to either be changed, I mean, a kid should be a kid, I don't care how old it is, and a spouse should be a spouse, I don't care how old they are.
I mean, can't we just rotate, I mean, can't we just put in, under personal leave, the ability to, you know, if it's use of personal leave as if there's an immediate family member?
Yeah, okay, so.
And I think that's also in contracts, in some of our employment.
All right, I, I just felt they were redundant, and, these two were redundant and, and weird.
Yeah, I think it's just.
Okay, so I, I can work with Donna and get thirty-one and, and thirty-two.
The personal leave is for personal purposes, right? It doesn't have to be for just them, it could be for a family member or.
Exactly.
Now, Tim.
Take the time.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Is this the one, though, where you raised that there might be a concern about changing the personal leave?
The.
The paid personal time off?
The PTO time, it's really, it's the equivalent of vacation time for those employees that are not full-timers, that, that work. They do qualify after a year, they've been here a year, they qualify for paid time off, which is kind of prorated, you know, annual leave. So I guess I wouldn't, you know, we'd have to be careful about eliminating that if we're, you know.
I'm sorry, I thought this was, I thought this whole section was, I thought, Kate, I thought you said this section was added.
I, I, small necessities was added. It wasn't in our old one.
No, but number eleven was saying, do we strike the paid personal time off if we add small necessities? And, and Tim is raising the concern.
I think we do it the other way around, small necessities wasn't in there. It's, it's odd, though, that this, this markup
Yeah.
Has, looks like it's different, 'cause there's other things that are clearly added.
Yeah, and for some reason, this one doesn't look clearly added, but they're certainly redundant and, they overlap a lot, and I don't see the difference.
I think we make personal leave a little bit more broad.
More broad.
I, I agree.
Okay, so we, we're not, okay, that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take the two of them.
Good.
Yes, right. And I will, I will put those together.
Okay. Hey, we're doing pretty well on time, too, I think, just a couple more minutes, yeah.
And whether we require the use of paid vacation and sick leave time before the family medical leave needs to.
That's standard, isn't it? For FMLA?
FMLA, well, okay, what's not, some people, or some places, if you're on FMLA, they pay the whole thing right off the bat. Okay, and, but in some places, they say, before you can use the FMLA, you have to use up all your, your sick leave, so.
I guess I've only worked for places in the second one, so I don't know why.
This is not municipal, well, it's a, you know, it's a better, obviously, it's a better benefit.
Yeah, what do we do now?
I, I think we allow people to, to take FMLA, e- even in increments, it, it doesn't have to be in, you know, one, one, yeah, it doesn't have to be continuous, it could be, you know, a day here, you know, an afternoon. And we don't require them to use their paid leave before they can use FMLA, they can use it intermittently. So for that. I don't know, Dave was trying to say something. David?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with Tim, I think. My experience is, is what Tim said, that you can use, you can use, once you apply for FMLA and you're accepted, you have a bank of FMLA and you just use it. You're not being paid for it, so you just use it, you know, whenever you want. It's like deciding when you're gonna be paid and when you're not gonna be paid. So, you can, you, if you have sick leave off the vacation, you know, normally people wanna preserve paychecks, so they would probably anyway use the paid time off before they go to the unpaid time off. But there's no reason to restrict it, that's what I mean.
So, the answer to that question is, we do not wanna require the use of paid vacation and sick leave time before FMLA kicks in.
I think.
Okay, so, that's the answer.
Yep.
No. That was a question Donna asked me, and I didn't know the answer, I said, I have to discuss that with the board.
All right.
Okay.
Good.
So, I think I will try to whip this, well, between Tim and, Tim, you and I, maybe we'll have a meeting somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
Once you get, you know, and I'll.
We can call Donna if we need to, yeah.
And I would say also, maybe our next presentation, maybe Donna should be present.
Sure, no, I'm sure she'd be happy.
Make sure we've got everything correct, but I think we're on our way.
Good. All right, well, let's.
Appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Kate, yeah.
And I appreciate everybody's, you know, attention and having read this, as difficult as was, as it was. Thank you.
Yep, good, thank you. The next item can be very quick, which is, so for the August tenth Select Board meeting, we've invited Mark Way, and he's accepted, to help us develop the Select Board goals for this next, this current fiscal year that we're in. And he would be doing that pro bono, which is terrific. He's a resident here in town, and also does a lot of work with municipalities and on leadership development. So, first of all, just confirming that everybody can do August tenth. And also that this is acceptable to everyone, that we take that Select Board meeting for this purpose.
Sure.
Sound good? All right. Great, you're checking a calendar? Okay.
I already checked mine.
And then my thought is that at our, our next Select Board meeting, we might just do a quick discussion, a brief discussion about preparation for that August tenth. And some of you have already been thinking about goals and have.
I already sent mine for you. My laundry list.
But I think that's a good thing to be doing, and, and I'll, I'll try to check in with Mark between now and our next meeting to see if there's anything specific that he wants to suggest in terms of preparation. And are you good with that date, Nathan?
I am.
Awesome, all right, good. That'll, that'll be on the list then for what we do on August tenth. Shall we go ahead and take the, shall we go ahead and do our elections, David? Just because it sounds like you're not gonna make it in person, so I think we should go ahead and do that.
I think we do it actually completely last, because technically, he's supposed to take over, or whoever is, oh, you already chaired, I don't like it.
I'm fine with that, I, my each day is nine, nine twenty-five, I'm, I'm happy to do it now.
What do you think, go ahead and.
I withdraw everything, I was just.
Okay, all right, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, David, if you're comfortable. So we are going to elect a chair for the Select Board, a vice chair, and a clerk. And it's just the members of the board that vote on this election. And the floor is open for nominations for the Chair of the Board.
I nominate Barney Arnold as Chair of the Select Board.
Second.
All right, anyone else wanna make a nomination? All right, any, I guess you don't have a discussion, really. All righty, well, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on Barney Arnold as Chair of the Select Board. Arnold, aye.
Uskalilowai.
Brown, aye.
David?
Say aye, David.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, your turn. They didn't hear me.
Yes.
Oh, no, I, I can't hear you.
Okay, read aye.
Oh, excellent. And thank you all very much, I'm honored, and I will do my very best to have us work well as a team and represent our town to the best of our ability. All right, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate David Modell as Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Second.
So David, we've, you've been nominated the Vice Chair, and it's been seconded, so we're gonna take a roll call vote.
Okay. You have to ask for more, any other nominations?
Oh, thank you, any other nominations?
Are you looking for your stuff behind you? You don't wanna run that over.
No, that's actually Barney's stuff.
Um, any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote on David Modell as the Vice Chair. Arnold, aye.
Uskalilowai.
Brown, aye.
David?
Am I supposed to abstain?
No. Nope.
You'll vote for yourself.
You can vote.
I'm not supposed to abstain or vote.
It doesn't matter, you've already won.
Read aye.
All right, we'll, we'll put that down as unanimously.
Oh, no, I.
Good, all right, that's done unanimously, and then let's open the floor for nominations for Clerk.
I nominate Nathan Brown as Clerk of the Select Board.
Second.
Any other nominations for Clerk? All righty, let's go ahead and take a vote then on Nathan Brown as Clerk for the Select Board. Arnold, aye.
Uskalilowai.
Brown, aye.
Oh, no, I.
Read aye.
Excellent. And, all right, welcome to the new officers of the Select Board.
Now hand the gavel to yourself.
We do have a gavel, there was a gavel.
You do.
Yeah, where's my, my crown, or my cape, or, yeah, my scepter? All right, good, thank you all. All right, let's go to then. All right, let's go to then the appointments of various committee members. And then we'll take separately the discussion of the liaison assignments. So that's the item 11 in your packet. So we have.
We're doing item five, right?
We haven't done five yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we forgot, we skipped the discussion of the format for the future Select Board meetings. Thank you, Nathan. So the, there may be some other options, but a couple of the questions that we, we should think about is, do we, we are, we are allowed by state law now to continue to do Zoom board meetings through April of next year. We also now can meet in person. And the question is, do we want to have our meetings always be in person? Do we want to think about alternating? One in person, one via Zoom. Thanks to our friends at Minuteman, they have figured out a system where we could have our meetings in person here and also set it up so that via Zoom, Carlisle residents would be able to participate as, in the same way that they had been doing when we had the Zoom board meetings, all of us online. So that's another element we should consider. And I'm just opening the floor for conversation, discussion about how we feel about that.
I think hybrid makes sense.
You think hybrid?
Yep.
So sometimes in person?
No, no, hybrid is.
Or hybrid is always in, we all, the board's always in person?
I think we should always be in person, but.
Okay, and then have the opportunity, yeah, okay.
No, exactly.
I agree with, with Luke.
I strongly agree. I think us being in person is important. It's just a completely different dynamic.
Yeah.
It is. And it doesn't mean that we can't have, no, and if we were hybrid, it would have been, well, because he's on the phone in the car, so it's, but.
You can still have a remote.
We could still have a remote, we could still see the person on the screen if we're.
That's right.
Which we've done a lot, right?
Yes.
We've just said it can't be the chair, but in this case now, it could be the chair until April.
Yeah.
Yep. David, do you have any thing to add on this? The, the sense of the group here is that we would go with the Select Board always being in person and then having that option, setting up the option so that residents could participate remotely via Zoom.
I like, I definitely like the combo, you know, options to participate remotely when we're in person. But my preference would be every alternating meeting to either the in-person with this in-option and one meeting, and the second one is 100% Zoom would be my personal preference, but this is my opinion.
You know, I, I mean, there's nothing to say that a Select Board member couldn't, you know, participate remotely, right?
Right, right. If, yeah, did you hear that, David, that a, you know, a Select Board member could participate remotely via Zoom through next April?
They can anyway, but they can.
The quorum.
But now we don't have to meet the quorum requirements and it can be the chair.
Exactly.
All right, so.
I mean, if everybody wants this might as well be a person every meeting, that's what we should strive to do, you know? Can't make it, as long as it's not pay yourself, it'll be okay.
That's the least preferred option, I think.
All right, well, that's, the, the sense of the group then is that we go with, we're going to meet in person as a Select Board as much as each of us can do that and then there's also the remote option. Okay, excellent, sounds good.
And incorporating feedback.
And, yes.
Yes.
Right, right.
Exactly, that residents will be able to participate remotely and make comments, yes.
Is that JBL both an input and an output?
Can he hear?
Can he, is that JBL?
It, it has a microphone, apparently isn't a very good one because he's having trouble hearing us.
I know, but if it were maybe in the middle of the table, it might be better.
What happened to that big thing that we have?
Going to need to buy some.
I hear Barney, I hear Barney calling, the most famous product.
Yeah, it's a directional mic, it's.
Yeah, okay.
Always did have a loud voice, too. Yes.
Can we move on to number 11? Because it's not quite time yet. Can we just do like the cemetery deeds or a little bit of town administrators report, just in case somebody wants to be here for that one?
Sure, sure. So Nathan's suggesting, and that's fine, that we go to cemetery deeds in case somebody was planning to show up for the discussion about committee appointments or liaison assignments. So let's do that. I think there's just one deed in here. If you go to page, section 12, would somebody make a motion to?
I move that Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Elena Kennedy, 1171 Westford Street at Green Cemetery, Lot D, 148 Graves, 1 and 2.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor moved and seconded. All those in favor, let's do a roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Uscalillo, aye.
Brown, aye.
David?
Oh, no, I.
Read aye.
Excellent, okay. Also, I wanted to say one other thing on the format for the Select Board meetings about the idea that, and we've included it tonight, of taking just two minutes when we get to the town administrators' report and review the proposed or, or a first draft of the agenda for the following Select Board meeting. That we try to do that so that we all have a chance to have some input into that agenda. Okay, great. Let's see.
This is not on the agenda.
No, it's not. No, we're not doing that tonight. Yeah, luckily.
You marked it all up?
I did.
I read it.
No, but actually. Kate's talking about the, the proposal about Comcast and our renewal of our license.
It's in my report. It's informational, but it's in my.
Oh, is it? Okay. Because I do have a question about page 15.
Do we get to sit through this right now?
All right.
Sure, let's do the town administrators' report. And that is number 13 in your book, yeah.
13. First item, taking another crack at the, the motion for the board to vote recommending the switch in the percentage of the health care insurance, which was obviously approved by town meeting. And that gave the board the ability to, to make that change. And it was rather inartfully worded last time. I think it says what we wanted to say this time. So I'd ask the board to approve that, if it's correct, you know.
I still don't love it, but I'll, I'll make the motion and we can discuss it. I move pursuant to section 7A of chapter 32B of the general laws that in addition, yes.
Yeah, it's that addition part.
Yeah, I, I, that's where I.
Well, you could say increase to a total of 55%.
You could just say, I move to, I move pursuant to section 7A of chapter 32B of the general laws that the town shall pay a subsidiary or additional, or an amount so that the town share is 55% premium and the employee share is 45%.
Yeah.
To say what it's going to be, not what it was.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so after the comma, get rid of the whole thing up until the next comma. Well done, Tim.
Well, that's. That whole first part is actually the language in the statute, so it's. I won't take the total blame for it, yeah. That's fine, yeah.
So does that work then?
Does it work if we, I move pursuant to section 7A of chapter 32B of the general laws that the town shall pay an amount, an, an amount of 55% of the premium and the employee share shall be 45% for health insurance?
Actually, it's not pursuant to that chapter. Because pursuant to the chapters, we have to pay a minimum of 50%.
Well, that's why it says in addition to, right, so maybe we just.
So I understand, so I'm just trying.
Have we started doing this yet?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're not holding anything up?
No, no.
Yeah.
But, okay, so what if we say, yeah, so I move pursuant to section, I'm going to read the whole thing. 7A of chapter 32B of the general laws that in addition to the payment of 50% of a premium for a contributory group life and health insurance for employees in the service of the town and their dependents, the town shall pay a subsidiary or additional amount so that the, subsidiary or additional amount, so that the town share shall increase to, yeah, no, that's right. 55% of the premium.
Yeah, I think this is does it.
Read it out loud, yeah.
What does this mean for contract, contract employees?
It, it, it applies to, yeah, there's language in the contract that says you, you get the health insurance at the rate that all.
All contracts refer to that?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so we're good with the motion on the floor? Did somebody say, yeah?
Luke, Luke made it and.
Okay, and Nathan seconded. Okay. Any more discussion?
We're never going to doubt you again, Tim, sorry. You just have to read it out loud.
Yeah, that's right. Don't have to remember that.
It doesn't read that great, but, yeah.
You did, you did it well, though, Tim, thank you. All right, let's do a roll call vote on, on this health insurance motion. Arnold, aye.
Uscalillo, aye. Brown, aye.
David?
Oh, no, I.
Read aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think it's just an echo.
Oh, yeah, it's certainly, yeah. All right, great. Tim, please continue.
Okay, I wanted to report to the board that building commissioner John Matuvia is, has agreed to serve as the interim planning administrator while the planning board decides how they would like to move forward and fill that position or create a new position. They're very happy that John has agreed to do this and I think it makes a lot of sense. And, and actually, because John is, is stepping into this role, we're going to roll out the, the SharePoint, the Shared Drive program with the planning board first. And I don't think I would have made that recommendation a couple of months ago, so just that John is there and is in charge, I think he'll, he'll make sure that it works out. So that's good news.
So was he not full time before? I don't remember.
He's four, he's four days a week currently as building commissioner. So he's working.
One day?
Yeah, essentially, over the, yeah, the course of the, yeah, his time.
He's not doing two jobs?
No, he's not, no, no, he's coordinating.
Well, he is now, but.
Yeah, but he doesn't have.
He's not doing 80 hours a week?
Not more than 40 hours.
Right.
Well, excuse me, I'm out of water. Well, I, does the planning administrator, I, I, does the planning administrator make a higher hourly rate? Will he be paid at the planning administrative rate?
He, it's going to be paid at his own rate.
Oh, he will?
Just to the, yeah, I think they're in the same grade, actually.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, yeah, but he's, he's agreed, he'll, he'll just, yeah, work at the same rate. Okay, also in the packet, you have the proposed license renewal draft from Comcast regarding the cable franchise. They're obligated by contract to provide that by June 15th to the town, which they did. And town council is reviewing that and also our consultants, the Buskey Group is reviewing that. As well, the, the needs assessment survey that the Buskey Group is completing will be out shortly. And you'll recall, we did the focus groups and, and the online survey. And in addition to that, we had meetings with the school department, the library and the mosquito to discuss the types of equipment that we may wish to request from Comcast because that's part of the negotiations. We agree on an amount of capital funding for equipment from Comcast. So there were some good ideas in those, from those discussions and that'll be part of the report. What the, what the recommendation would be in terms of additional equipment. There was the discussion of maybe having, rather than having to go over to Concord to do lots of things, that there could be kind of a studio sorts here in the library or, or at the schools. There'd be the ability to use a lot of the, the equipment that, that people want to use without having to necessarily go to Concord to get that, so.
Those Claude's vision many years ago.
That was right, yeah, in addition to the streetlights, yeah, which he accomplished, yeah.
If I haven't been tuned in this at all, is there any flexibility for them for providing service to people who live a little further away from the road as part of this contract?
Yeah, the, well, that, that, the, what's that called?
350 feet of distribution pool.
Yeah, it, it's going to be one of the items. That's, that's something that came up in the focus groups and the surveys that.
People wanted to get.
Yeah.
Well, and then that's also partly my question on page 15 about coverage area to be served. And I know there are some underserved areas. And in there, it says upon written request of, from the town, the licensee shall conduct a survey to determine the number of dwelling units in the requested area and shall inform the town of the survey results and applicable costs to extend service to the area. And because we have ARPA funds, which actually, that's one of the things we could get funded.
To extend, yeah.
I would definitely like to see this letter get written right now requesting that survey.
Yeah, I think we do have something, if I remember, right? There's a map. I remember a map.
There's a service.
Just the map that's in this document.
Is it, is it in that document?
It's totally unclear.
Asking them who, who they're not serving right now and why would be.
Oh, that's a good idea. Ask for that survey now.
And we, we need that and we, we would have the money to pay for that at this point.
People wouldn't, you don't want to tell them that.
No, well, no, but.
Well, they're going to know.
Their thing says that, you know, they'll tell us the cost to extend the services. So they'll do the survey, but then we'll have to.
I think we ask them to do the survey now and we try to negotiate in.
Right, whatever.
A longer thing, you know, a, a further distance and then whatever's not covered there, we could try to get.
Yeah. That's, that is something that we want to jump on before it gets too far down.
No, are you talking about this map?
Yeah.
There, there's a better map that's got green on it.
Oh, never seen that one.
Yeah, yeah. No, there is, there's a better map somewhere. I mean, I could be completely.
Not only that, but this map that they had in here is so distorted that that's not even, you know, it's like they did a 2D, 3D type of thing. That's not even the shape of Carmel.
No, but. Maybe, maybe I'll reach out to Claude if he's even still responding to people. Because I, I, I know there's a map with green and maybe it's something that Claude did, but it's got the underserviced areas. So, yeah, so I, it doesn't have cost or anything, right, or distances.
But they would have to tell us what the cost to extend the service to those people would be.
Yeah.
And so we, we need to know that, right?
Yeah. Note of that, do you want to reach out to Claude or do you want me to? He might not respond to me.
Just tell Claude that they only printed this on one side of the paper, then he'll engage right away.
There you go.
All right, good. Are we ready to move on to the number four?
Okay, number four, you probably know that Carlisle has received a mattress recycling initiative grant for this year. And part of the preliminary information we need to send to the state by August 1st is whether or not we would charge for such mattress recycling. So someone could bring a mattress to the transfer station. And we've never had a discussion of whether or not there'd be a charge for that. But if, we're contemplating doing that, we, we need to notify DEP before the con, the contract will come out in September. They want to know by August whether or not we'd be charging for that recycling.
And so do they recommend people, towns to charge or do they recommend charge towns not to charge under the script?
I don't know if they've got a, a preference, a policy. I mean, it seems like we talked about charging for bulky or hard to get rid of items in general at the transfer station. That's part of what the task force is looking into. I only bring this up now because of the, kind of the time sensitive nature of getting back to DEP on it.
If we said we were going to charge, would, could we pull that back? Could we change that if the task force, you know, recommendations come out?
I don't think it's a binding kind of thing.
Yeah, because the, I know the task force is looking at that, yeah, as you said, the tire range of things that are brought. brought for and dropped off that costs the town to then dispose of. And this falls into that category, because it'll be a cost to us to transport it.
Yeah, so what exactly is the grant? How much is it? Is it?
Um.
And then how much does it cost? So, like, how many mattresses could be?
Seventy-five hundred, something like that.
Yeah, isn't it, my understanding is it's to provide the, the storage.
The container, the container.
Unit, the container, so that there's a place to store them until you have enough.
And Gary selected a container, it costs slightly more than the grant, but he thinks it's worth it to spend.
And then we still have to. Yeah, seventy-five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then we still, the town would still have to transport it, you know, on our dime to the, uh.
Yeah, then I say we charge.
It says, it says that they include the, it includes the transportation of the loads.
It's a one year, one year program.
One year.
For one year.
They, yeah.
Ah.
And then up to seventy-five hundred for an approved collection container. So for one year, they pay everything?
Yeah, then, then I would charge.
Got it. Well, that works, and then, then from there on out, then we'll have the task force recommendation by then about charging.
Okay, so initially, no.
Right.
And then perhaps, okay.
Because the grant covers that, covers the transportation cost, okay.
It won't get reimbursed until twenty forty, but.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and then, um, yeah, you've got, uh, number five, too.
Number five, uh, got a request for one day, uh, beer and wine license for Clark Farm, two oh one Bedford Road. I moved it to board, the select board, uh, approved the one day liquor license for Clark Farm Market, two oh one Bedford Road on, uh, Thursday, seven fourteen, wow, from five P M. to eight P M. For their annual corn hole tournament invitational.
Usually don't we have a, um, contingent on they're getting whatever.
You have the police chief sign off.
The police has.
Police chief, but there's also some, wasn't there some insurance?
Post liquor liability.
Post liquor liability insurance.
Contingent on provided, they provide, uh, post liquor license insurance. Second?
Any discussion? Let's take a roll call.
Do they have that insurance already?
He's bringing it in tomorrow.
Okay. This is tomorrow.
Great, uh, so we're gonna take a roll call vote on approving this license, the one day special beer and wine license for Clark Farm. Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Brown, I.
David?
I'll get a lie.
Red, I.
I'll get a lie.
Yeah, got it. Um, and then, Tim, were you also gonna include the Green Futures Act?
Oh, you're right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I believe all the board members received a, I haven't seen a copy of the letter, but the board's been asked to, uh, uh, sign on to a letter of support, uh, Green Futures, that, I, I know Barney's got some more information on that.
Yeah, we sent it out, um, it went, yeah, out in an email to people, um.
If it was spam, I deleted it.
For the new legislation?
Or was it through Jen?
Yes, here it is. It's the, um, so we received this from a coalition that is urging, um, municipalities and, and town leaders to, uh, support the Green Future Act, which is House Bill thirty-two ninety-two. And it's to achieve a green future with infrastructure and workforce investments. And, um, I, I, I could read the whole thing, but we all, pardon?
I don't think they, they knew about me.
No, I included you.
You did?
Yeah, because I was the one.
Yeah, I, I thought it was spam, I deleted it.
Oh, whoops.
So I didn't read it, yeah. No, I get crap like that all the time.
Oh, okay, um, well, um, the, the reason we're, it's on the agenda tonight, which normally we wouldn't take something at the last minute like this, is that they they have a June, a July twentieth, uh, deadline, uh, for which they'd like us to have, um, signed off on this, and and there's a form we complete online that would indicate our support for the, for this bill. And, uh, shall I just, you want me to just briefly review it, or should, I mean, the other way to go is we just tell them we can't make the June twenty deadline, uh, July twenty deadline and we'll discuss.
Yeah, or, or we don't have to all sign off on it, right?
Well, no, it's the board, it's the select board.
Right, but it could be like three out of five.
Oh, well, that's true.
Yeah.
You mean that if, if three of us are ready tonight?
Yeah, I just, I just won't sign it, you know, it's fine.
I got you. Um, well, it sounds like Nathan, you haven't looked at it either.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and Kate, did you?
I did look at it, and I didn't know who, who that commission was, and I didn't understand it was from you, that you had forwarded it, although I read it.
My spam was justified, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So sorry, um.
Well, listen, let's not, yeah.
I mean, in general, I'm in favor of that, those things, but in my case, I'm working very hard at the state level to make sure that any of these green things also get connected with the housing things, because, um, I wanna get credit for all the green things that this town does, um, and, and, and to give credit for the housing that we're not doing, because we don't wanna cut the trees and we don't have the infrastructure, so I'm trying to get that to be a trade off, so if there's no trade offs in there, I'm usually a little less anxious to be supporting those things, that's all.
Yeah. Um, so I, I ran this by Lana Zamaro, who, and also Bob Zog, you know, Bob, both of them are on the Energy Task Force, and Lana has been working hard, uh, she knows a lot about this bill, and the League of Women Voters is supporting it. And I sent, I, you're right, that's my mistake, I should have sent it through Jen, and then it would have been included also in the official information, so lesson learned, um. I think we should hold off on this then. I, I don't wanna have us do something quickly, even if it's, uh, even if we might all end up supporting it, so we'll just, we'll just offer, we'll just, uh, discuss this, we'll vote on it next time, and, um, our, uh, if we choose to support it, we'll give them our support then. I mean, the bill is just making its way through the legislature, so it is bound to get reworked and additional support coming forward, I'm sure will still be helpful, so we'll move on then. Um, so, Tim, I think that's the end of your report, is that right?
That's right, yeah, and just.
So what we have then on our, in our packet is, and it, we saw it ahead of time, is, is a draft of the agenda for the July twenty-seventh meeting. And what we've got, got on here are, um, engineering, a presentation about the engineering for the Maple and Curve Street Bridges. Um, the audit committee, which we did not have the, um, the auditor himself here, the last time we talked about it, so that's that's something we're doing, um, at the next meeting. We're, it, we will continue with the personnel policies, um. As I mentioned already, we're gonna, um, preview the goal setting session with Mark Way, um, appointments, so, um, the ARPA committee, and we haven't actually gone back to discuss, we haven't discussed yet the, um, annual appointments, so we'll come back to that, but if we still need to have the Public Safety Building Task Force on here, or any other, um, appointments that we don't do tonight, that would be under this section. Uh, and then we've also agreed tonight that we are going to, um, what did we just say earlier? We're gonna put on the agenda? Um, what did we say? Uh, gosh, I can't remember. What was, oh, I should have written it on here. Anyway, then the usual things at the end. Uh, does anybody know offhand of something else, uh, that we ought to have on our agenda, uh, in two weeks? Or have any, uh, questions or comments about what's here?
Yeah, the, the tech engineering thing, is that when they came the last time, right, and they wanted to do the grant so they could do the engineering for, is that that? That, that whole thing again? That, um, that, well, we have, we have a grant to do a design of improvements at those two bridges. Yeah, I remember the board's discussion was, I think the estimate was like something like two hundred thousand per bridge, and everybody thought that sounded a little, uh, yeah, like a little much, so.
Yeah, well, the thing is too, because I remember with Maple Street, yeah, it was putting up that metal rail, I mean, it, it looked like.
Yeah.
You know what, yeah, I, I mean, it'd be awful, right, so, where are, are we going down? Why, why is this on? I thought that was kind of a done deal. Why are they coming back?
I think that, well, I think the board approved with their going ahead with the grant, doing the design, that it's not a commitment to.
Oh, okay, oh, gotcha, gotcha, oh, okay.
Now, they, they have a twenty-five percent design.
Yeah. Yeah.
Projects.
Yeah. Okay, I, I mean, I guess, yeah. Were you on the board then? Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, because Dave was on, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, he had some comments.
Yeah. All right.
Um, I don't know, there might be a presentation from, uh, MFC about, um, an organization for town, school, you know, for the department, but I don't know who we, that we write, get for presentation.
Far enough along.
Far enough along. It, it got started, so.
Okay.
I'll report to you on that during the liaison reports.
Okay. And, uh, any other, at the moment, any other, um, suggestions about, uh, agenda items? All right, well, it sounds like, um, we've got a good start here, and, um, David and I are, as the chair and vice chair, are gonna meet, um, you know, once after the, each select board meeting and work with Jen and Tim on the agenda, and then our goal is to get that out early, um, as we did this last time. And also make it clear to anybody coming to make a presentation that we need their, um, presentation materials, uh, in hand by a week before the next select board meeting, and then we can mail the packet out right after that.
Yeah.
I just wanna say you have place here as the remote meeting, and it's gonna be, I think.
Right, all right, so, yeah, yeah, good note, so this will be in person, and, but hopefully, do we think that, um, by two weeks from tonight, uh, Tim and Mark will be able to have the?
Mark, uh, from, I mean, media, it's been very helpful, with this, also, yeah, Bob, I'll go from Drive Tech, uh, so we're hoping, uh, I think.
You have the equipment, bro.
That's, that's what, yeah, we need to know.
Move our furniture and get us.
One of the, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it was mentioned, but, uh, in order to use this screen for the Zoom portion of the meeting, it would mean orienting, you know, moving the table this way, so that you could see the screen, because you couldn't from here, where you are now.
Right, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, so that these folks would be sitting over there looking this way, and this table would be turned this way.
Put us right by the door, yeah, I'm from.
Right by the, also the water, yeah.
Oh, gosh, is it heresy, heresy to say, well, maybe we just leave this one here up against the wall and go with something smaller, where we could curve a little bit and see each other a little more?
Yeah, I think we'd be, we could be on either side of it, though, right? If it was this way.
Yeah.
No, not because people would still be hiding behind, from five minutes back.
I was also considering the ability to get cameras towards the front of the table, and I put the table over here, and I have the backs of everyone's head.
Hey, David, welcome.
Hi. This is terrible sound, so could you hear me at all?
Yes, yes, we could hear you bright and clear.
I couldn't tell you, it was so.
I'm sorry, um, Mark's, uh, fellow from Minuteman, Mark is describing how we might, um, be able to do the remote meetings.
Hear you on the microphone.
Yes, thanks, Mark.
So the.
Yeah, come on up to the, yes, please.
So the Zoom meeting participants would be heard on the speakers in the ceiling, so you won't be having the crazy little thing there, which was very well done, but we'll do it better, and anyone who wants to present from every laptop can just turn the laptop on, join the meeting without their audio, and you're right on the screen, and everyone at home can instantly see it, and we don't have the challenge with over here, because we'll get that set up, and it'll be a lot easier, so, you know.
Excellent.
Saying so, um, and as soon as we get the devices.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So, so we need to bring our laptops, that's the bottom line also.
If you wanna present, present, yes.
Also, if you wanna see people that are participating.
I know, because they'll be behind you up on that screen.
We're gonna move, we're gonna move our furniture, yeah.
So, it, it'll be nuts.
So will the people that are here see the backs of us, man?
We're talking about moving over to the one side or the other, yeah. Yes, thank you very much.
What's the cost?
Just the.
We, we, we don't think it's gonna be, the cost is not gonna be great, I mean, we can do this pretty inexpensively, yeah.
I think I said to the links, we've made the prices on them, too, I think.
Yeah.
Can you cover that? Okay, money?
Yeah, yeah, no, certainly, yeah.
All right, so, um, we are done previewing the agenda for the next week, so let's go on to, uh, where's my? Yeah, number eleven, hold on, what have I regular? I had my marked up agenda, all right, here we go. Yeah, so we're going to, uh, the annual appointments and then the discussion of the liaison assignments. So for annual appointments, um, what we have in our book is under eleven. We have just the, um, we have a specific, um, membership proposal for the Affordable Housing Trust, um, and then their the question of the Public Safety Building Committee. Now, this first motion, uh, looks like it's improving the entire list of town board and committee appointments that is, uh, in the packet, um. So that is.
You probably eventually.
No, I don't, I don't think we can adopt this entire, uh, um, set of boards, we could, um, maybe, I think we did this before and then stopped, but maybe we should go through and say which ones we think we could go ahead and approve, appoint tonight, and then the ones we wanna hold off, um, does that make sense? Yeah, all right, so, um, let's, so I'm gonna, we'll hold the Affordable Housing Trust for its own separate motion. But we've got the Agricultural Commission, just say hold if you wanna discuss it separately. All right, the Audit Committee, Board of Registars, Celebrations Committee, uh, CPC Committee. Con, Conscom.
Are we close to getting somebody from RecCom for, uh, CPC? I just noticed this one.
Luke?
Yeah, so ultimately, uh, Mark didn't re-up, so they just have to vote somebody, I, I can text Drew.
Okay, so we can just, we can just appoint that person individually later, right?
Yeah.
So go ahead and import the rest of the, the current, the ones that are listed here, okay.
As long as there's nobody named TBD in town.
Right, all right, Conscom, uh, Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, CRAC. They've got two vacant.
Are they worried about those two vacancies?
See that? Okay, great, uh, Council on Aging.
So, um, I'm sorry, should we just take Conservation Restriction Advisory out then, since we're not actually appointing anybody? Nobody there is expiring.
Ah.
Mm-hmm.
Good point.
But that's true of all, several of the other ones.
Which one?
The only ones expiring is twenty twenty-one, there.
You're right, you know what, Conscom doesn't have anybody, uh, that needs to be reappointed.
Don't we have to re-up everybody or only the?
I, I thought the bolded ones were people that were, their terms were expiring, and now twenty twenty-four is the new end date, right?
Ah, oh, I see, yes, yes, is that right, Jen? Is that how we should read this? Thank you, Jen, you tried to, you tried to help us out.
Yeah, I think everybody, right.
Yes, okay, got it, so if it has people that are bolded, uh, that means they need to be appointed, so in every one of these committees has somebody that's, uh, needs to be reappointed.
Yeah, so like CRAC is only one year appointment, right, so that's why everybody's.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, so let's go to the next page, Cultural Council, and there's nobody bolded there, so we actually don't have to vote on them. Okay, uh, yeah, the Energy Task Force, let's hold on this one.
And if it's a one year term, it says twenty twenty-four.
No.
Yeah, it says one year up here.
It's a compensation.
Okay, well, anyway, we're gonna hold on that one, uh, the FinCom.
I think you did that, no? FinCom? Those expire at the end of the town meeting? Didn't Jim Dar ask us to do that? Maybe I'm thinking.
I think we did it.
Glenn Lipinski and James Kettage, yeah.
Everybody's re-upping, I guess.
Okay. All right, the Historical Commission. All right, the Household Recycling Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee, they don't need any reappointments. Alan's going off, though. Well, unless he, oh, right, representing the Board of Selectmen, though. This is, is this under the, is this, so was that a member? Was he a member or the liaison?
No, he was a member.
He was a member, okay. That's okay. All right, so we're going to vote to, well, we'd have to wait till I have one of us. Yeah, okay, that's a hold. Land Stewardship.
Yeah, those should be 2024, right?
Where it says 2021?
Yeah.
Yes, right. Okay. The Municipal Facilities Committee. All right.
Point out one mistake on the chart. The Municipal Facilities Committee, the School Committee no longer has a dedicated seat on that committee. This new year, thought she was, her appointment was expiring, because she was no longer on the committee, that's not the case. She is not up to be appointed until 2022.
Okay, we're going to, we're holding off...
Does she, does she hold the seat as a school committee rep or as her herself?
Her appointment came from the Board of Selectmen.
As an individual or as the school committee rep? No, but that's, you're not answering the question, John.
I think I am, but what happened is that after she was appointed by the Board of Selectmen from the School Committee, the charter was changed and that criteria was removed.
Okay.
They're holding it anyway, right? You know, John, thanks for that, we're holding on this, yeah, okay, thank you, John, okay. Personnel Board, the Recreation Commission. Next one's vacant, this, oh, wow, Scholarship Advisory Committee. Might as well reappoint Frank and we'll, Senior Tax Advisory Committee, the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee, Trails Committee, Veterans Committee, no one's being reappointed on the Youth Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Just a question, how does one determine what the tenure is for each of these?
It's in the charter for the committee.
Is it historic folkloric, or do they decide that?
It's in the charter.
Well, I understand that, but how was it decided whenever it went into the charter?
I guess it depends upon which...
I mean, the committee self-decide, or?
No, the Board of Selectmen put together the charter and they decided how long they thought the term should be.
Okay, so if we thought, for example, Traffic and Advisory should be a two-year assignment, could we change it?
Just change the charter.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. I was, we want to just cross it off, I was on the River Stewardship Council when I was on the board last time, and I do have to be on again.
Oh, good.
What river?
The Concord River.
The Concord River, is, does it abut, I guess it does, or wouldn't that?
Yeah.
Eastern edge, okay.
They'll be happy to hear that.
Will they?
Yeah, maybe somebody contacted, well...
Nathan will be happy that Nathan's appointed.
All right, so, so here's what I would suggest, yeah, that we make a motion to accept everything except the holds.
I make a motion that we accept that the Select Board vote to approve the list of FY '22 Town Board and Committee appointments effective July 1st, 2021, as presented on July 13th, 2021, for the following committees and commissions, or by Agricultural Commission, Product Committee, Board of Registars, Celebrations Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Finance Committee, Historical Commission, Household Recycling Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee, Land Stewardship Committee, Personnel Board, Recreation Committee, River Stewardship Council, Scholarship Advisory Committee, Senior Tax Advisory Committee, Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee, Trails Committee, Veterans Committee, Youth Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, as amended tonight. I'm sorry, I retract Insurance Advisory Committee.
Well, were we, were we just going to reappoint a BOs rep? I mean, we can do that tonight.
Yeah, well, we'll do it separately, let's do this one then.
I second that motion.
All right. Good, so we have a, motion's been made and seconded, is any more discussion? Ready to vote? All right, roll call vote, Arnold, I.
No, we don't need to.
Oh, we don't need to do that now, that's right. So...
Aye.
Aye.
We're just all saying aye, okay, excellent. All right, so those committees and boards have been appointed, and great, we'll let them know.
Okay.
All right. So let's go back to the holds, are we going to... So let's start with the first one that we held, which is the Energy Task Force. I would like to recommend that we hold off on this one entirely, rather than appointing one person, and I, I want, it's somewhat relevant to something that Kate has been discussing about sort of a code of conduct for people that serve on boards and committees, and I think we may want to consider that. So, and since there's only one person currently...
There's no committee.
There's no committee.
There can't be a quorum.
Right, right, so this, this, this group will just be put on hold for now.
Put it aside until we deal with it in the future.
Yeah. All right, that takes us to the Insurance Advisory Committee, but are we going to wait till we do the, our liaison assignments? Or just go ahead and do that?
Somebody could volunteer, I mean, Nathan just volunteered for the...
Other one, so this is, right, to...
Doesn't mean I'm volunteering for this one.
Insurance Advisory Committee.
I'll do it, nobody else.
What does it do?
Well, that's the one that decided whether, you know, the 55, 45, they're the ones that, first of all, changed from the original insurance company to the Blue Cross, which saved that money to start with. I doubt that they'll be meeting as much as they were before this, but...
Right, they've done some of the big things.
Yeah, the way they went for years without meeting at all, so...
Okay, so there you go.
Did you look at all the insurances?
Just the health insurance.
It's only health insurance?
Yes.
It's not the other insurance?
It's not the property or liability? Well, we do that through our office.
This may, though, we may, though, because of our personnel policy, be needing to meet to talk about the long and short term.
Yeah, disability, yeah, exactly.
So that's why I'm sort of interested in...
All right, great.
All right, so finishing that up, really, we just need to appoint Kate, because everybody else, their appointments go through till 2023 anyway, so...
The Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Insurance Advisory Committee as amended tonight, effective July 1st, 2021.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
No discussion. I wonder what Kate's been doing, it's already July 13th. Been sitting around for 13 days?
No, I've been working on their long and short term disability.
In that case, I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, excellent. Let's move to the Municipal Facilities Committee.
I haven't been engaged, I haven't been on the Board of Selectmen. But there seems to be a little bit of confusion about exactly what the charter is and what the makeup of this is. Selfishly, I'd like to figure out how I could become a member of this committee as well.
I can tell you.
And so I think, I think that we just have, well, maybe I'm on as a, as a citizen. But I think that we have just more, I'd like us to talk more about it, and so just kind of put it aside for now and get through the rest of these.
Well, and I also think we need to talk about the charter, because I think, especially if we're going to be looking towards a centralized facilities department, we definitely need school committee on it, and, and school committee, not past school committee.
Right. I agree with that.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah. I can work on that with you, Kate.
Be happy to.
Okay.
All right, great.
So what happens to everybody? It's only the two guys are now the only people that, you know, the...
No, there's already, there are four, well, there are two voting members.
That's what I mean, so it's only Kate and Scott at the moment?
Kate and Scott.
The committee continues to operate with its old members until new members are appointed.
Okay, very good.
All right.
So somebody needs to inform Christine, though, right? I mean, she, she...
Yeah, she'll...
I had dinner with her the other night, and I think she's expecting to be on it.
Well, she's one of the applicants, I mean, applicants, but you know what I mean, that she's, she's sent in her letter of interest.
For what, for what slot, though?
She's still a member.
She's still a member, until she's not.
All right, so we're going to hold on that, and we'll, let's put that on the agenda for our meeting in two weeks. And then Nathan and Kate can do some work in between.
I think this might fit under some of our goals for this year.
Okay, and that's it that we put on hold, correct?
I think so.
Okay. So we're done with that piece?
So then I will, so then we're at the...
Can I ask you another question, just curious? So you get to these, like Youth Commission, three years, I guess, in the charter, but somehow, oh, I guess it's one person, but five out of six or six out of seven are coincident terms.
Right, they're not staggering.
I mean, should we be staggering those?
Yes, absolutely.
And how would we do that, given the charter says three years and blah, blah, blah? Just some, not a pressing item, but we ought to, we ought to pay attention to that.
Well, and I think...
And the one year's like, obviously, and I still don't understand why you'd have a one year and just have 100%. It seems to me, as long as we're going to it, we ought to try to do three-year terms with stagger, not have this one year. We have a crazy quote, right, why do we, just one of the three years?
I think part of it is that, some of the ones that I've been a part of creating was, there was a concern that we, that three years was...
Too long and people wouldn't want it?
Was too big a commitment to be asking people to do, and so basically it was suck them in and then hold them.
Yeah, we only have, it looks like we only have a couple that are one years. Tax Advisory, I don't know, it looks like it's mostly town.
We just have five-year ones.
I don't know, my advice is we should ask those committees that are one year if they would, how they would feel about three-year assignments. And then, or it could be one, two, and three-year, right?
Yeah.
To stagger that.
So that it starts to stagger, because you don't want everybody going off after three years, and then nobody knows what the heck is happening. So it does have to be staggered.
All right, good point. Let's move on then to our liaison, no, oh, that's right, let's do the Housing Trust, sorry.
And my question to the board is...
Yes, so that's, you have the, excuse me a sec, but, so right after those, that list, you have the Affordable Housing Trust charge, and then the list of members and those being proposed to be appointed. And there are four positions with three-year terms that expire in 2024, and there are three positions with a one-year term that expire in 2022.
So who's expiring, because they all say 2021?
They're all expiring, because they used to all be one-year terms.
Right, so this is a change.
Expiring, which is why when we did the new bylaw, we said one and two-year terms for the first, for the first go-round, and then after that is two years.
Yeah, so if you look up in the second paragraph at the, at the end, it describes that.
And so this is, so there's three positions that we're looking to fill?
Well, actually, no, there's seven positions we're trying to fill.
Because they were all just a one-year appointment, right? Weren't they, yes, the whole board needs to be reappointed, but some of them are reappointed for a three-year term and one for a one.
And the other thing is that it's, I don't know, I lost my page.
Sure.
Seven trustees, no fewer than one member of the Select Board. I would like to be the member, but that means, doesn't mean that there couldn't be another member of the Select Board, it just says no fewer than one member. I'd like to be on one more year, try to get the thing kind of up and running.
Dave, you expressed interest, right?
I expressed the interest, yeah.
The first thing we need to talk about is the makeup, and then we can talk about who's...
Exactly.
But do you...
The first question is, do we want more than one Select Board member on it, to start with?
Right.
Do, before we even go there, can just ask a question, Kate? How many, what mix of one, two, and threes, do we know that?
What, you mean, no, it's just ones and twos?
It's only ones and twos?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this is one and three.
Yeah, it says four positions.
Yeah, for three-year terms and three...
Oh, so it's the ones and threes?
Is that what you wanted?
No, no, this, because these are, it's, no, this is only...
Because it says here, all right, that the, one, some for one year.
One-year term, and, yeah, that's a mistake, it's four positions with one-year terms, or with two-year terms and three position, so it's four positions with two-year terms and three positions with one-year terms.
And that's in the chart?
It's, yes, because it's, "Seven appointments initially made after the adoption of this article shall be for a term of one year, so that as nearly an equal number of the trustees' terms as possible shall expire each year. Trustees shall serve for a term of two years and may be reappointed." So it's a maximum of two years.
So you're just staggering them a little bit?
Just try to stagger them.
Yeah, that's good.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, so it is four with two.
Yeah.
So you, all right, and so then the question, and seven, it's for sure seven, or it's up to seven?
No, yeah, seven is seven, consisting of seven trustees.
Okay, so one BOs or more. And we've received three interested parties who are not BOs.
And I have two more in the wings.
It's actually another, yeah, because there's...
You have four, so you have six, you have six.
There's another one with five, did Vanessa just come in today? I got another one.
Carolyn, Vanessa, Vanessa will come on if she doesn't get on governance, she would say, she's, if she, because she's applied for governance and her first choice is governance.
Do we know the timing of Wayne's selection?
I do, I, I talked, I reached out to him, and he is actually making the choices right now and expect by the end of the week to...
Do we need to wait?
Know those.
But I guess we can appoint everybody else.
Well, we can appoint everybody else. I haven't had a...
But we shouldn't over-appoint, in other words, we shouldn't backdoor with BOs.
That's why she's not even on this list right now, and there's another person that I could ask. But I've got...
So if you, if you...
So now we're at the question.
I've got five out of the seven.
So if you, right, so ideally, you would, you would not have more than one other Select Board person.
Not more than one other, it would be zero, it would be one or two.
One or two.
Well, not the, not the chair of the Select Board, though.
No, right, not the chair, but the...
The Select Board member isn't necessarily the chair of the Housing Trust, right?
That's correct.
No, right, right.
And I may be for one more year, I don't know, we'll see.
So currently, there are four Select Board members here, and we're saying...
I'd like to see it be three, but I don't know, maybe I just, because I proposed that a couple of years ago, when I also proposed, like, we dropped the chair from being on the, I just felt like the chair of the Board of Selectmen being on Housing Trust kind of lent, like, too much authority of the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had talked about this earlier a little bit, and we're thinking, one for sure, as the, as the bylaw proposed, and that, I actually think two Select Board members, if there's another member that wants to serve, that would be fine, but just having been on it this last year, and that there's a lot of work to be done, I think having...
Members tend not to be real work... And select board members tend not to be real work forces, so that's what the idea was, to have some direction from the select board, but have the worker bees, have more worker bees.
Any other comments from David or Luke?
I agree with what you said. I agree with both comments. It's, it's up to the people who really want to do it to do it.
So what we're saying is that this year, it's going to be two board selecting, uh, two board.
Members.
Two select board members, but we're not saying that the Affordable Housing Trust is two select board members, we're saying that it is a minimum of one. Is what, so we're not, we're not changing anything other than we're, you know, we're just saying, okay, well, this year is just gonna be, there's only two people who are gonna be on it. So the following year it could be three, and nobody's saying, oh, no, you can only have two select.
No, it's not.
Following could be one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always has to have one.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that, it's not a precedent, I mean, from now on, it's.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah. So you, you just volunteered yourself.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you did.
Well, you did earlier, but.
No, I didn't. All I just said was, I think, uh.
Okay.
Just the number, I'm not volunteering myself.
Okay, so, um.
Well, David and I are not getting on it, Barney's not eligible, so, short straw, if he wants two.
Only if he wants two.
You don't have to have two, you don't have to have.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, let's move on, um, and, uh, let's, um, it sounds like we're in agreement and understanding about, uh, the number of select board members, uh, so now I think we can take a motion to appoint, um, Kate Reed representing the select board, uh, and then Gina Fox, Beverly Shory, Carolyn Ing, and Maureen Cosgrove-Derry, is that right?
Should you clarify which ones are getting the two-year, two-year terms?
Yes, and do you know what their preferences are? Do you wanna just?
They're all two years, except for me, it would be one year.
Okay, so, um.
So that fills up your two-year slots.
Right.
And that leaves two open one-year slots.
Yeah, and two open one-year slots, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so who would like to make that motion? David, it sounds like you've got your hand, your, you've got the handle on it.
Sure.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Bar, um, sorry, Kate Reed to a one-year term, Gina Fox, Beverly Shory, Carolyn Ing, and Maureen Cosgrove-Derry, each to two-year terms on the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust.
Second?
Excellent, any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent.
Okay, but I do need to know, how many more people am I recruiting?
Two more.
Two.
Two more for each a year.
Selectmen, non-selectmen? What, what am I, who am I?
I don't think.
That's what I'm asking.
Two more.
I was just trying to be clear with what we were saying.
Okay, sorry, two more.
Is it two, are we saying it has to be two? If we had said it had to be two or three, then other people would have.
All right.
Okay.
All right, good.
So I will get two more people.
And then, of course, any.
I was just looking at what the precedent was.
All right, I just wanted to be sure, I don't wanna get two people and then find out that I made a big mistake. Okay.
All right, so that's great, and, um, uh, let us turn to the liaison assignments then. And, um, I, I guess I'd like to first talk about, uh, well, first, uh, are there any, anything missing? Looked to me like it was, uh, comprehensive, but, um, I just wanna ask if anybody sees any commi, commission or committee missing. And then, um, where is, let's see, I have that separate one with the liaison assignments. So if that seem, looks good to everybody.
Just wanna check this one thing on here.
Sure.
The working groups and task force.
Yes.
And since it's a working group, doesn't Tim have to be the one who says, who requests people be on it? I think we should, personally, I think we should.
Why would that be?
Book it making in a committee.
Okay.
But.
So we, what falls under that, the, um.
Just the technology working group there.
Just the technology working group.
That's Tim's group entirely, right?
Right. I mean, is that. Who appointed this committee? No matter, no matter what you call it, it's a committee.
Okay, even though it says working group.
Or is it a working group that you put together?
It, it is a, a working group, I was just drawing the distinction, that even if you appointed something you called a working group, you've appointed a committee.
Right, right. Right, which is subject to open meeting law.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But isn't a working group essentially subject to open meeting law, if it meets regularly?
As Tim can put together.
Not if it's, uh, not if it's yours.
Yeah, not if, not if I create it.
So what we've done in this case is we've asked him to, uh, put together a team to deal with a particular issue at his discretion.
So this list is no longer correct, then, because Highland Building is a building committee, it's not a task force. Do you guys, on the Highland Committee, take minutes and post agendas and stuff?
Aye.
You're, yeah, you're not in charge, so.
Yeah, I'm not in charge, so I don't pay attention, I, I don't think we have a, ah, I can look.
It's not on here.
Yeah, it should be, if it were, I mean.
If it was a, um.
Ad hoc, yeah, uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that should be doing.
And the Transfer Station Task Force isn't on here either, I just realized, right?
Yeah, yeah, John always asks for somebody to take minutes, they just never volunteer.
Okay, so he's probably doing.
Yeah, so I'm sure he's doing it.
Now, the Transfer Station Task Force?
And they are following open meeting law.
That's a committee.
Yeah.
So that, that.
Well, task force is what we describe them as, with a one-year, you know, they're.
Okay, so you know what, there's committees and there's ad hoc committees, just for, you know, that are short-term. Committees go for years and years and years and years, and ad hoc is for one.
Yeah.
Short, one project or something, right?
So working groups, task force, and ad hoc committees.
Right, um.
So departments is clear.
Yeah.
Right, so we didn't get, okay, so the Transfer Station Task Force needs to be added, okay?
And this is my opportunity to say what I would like, because I'm new on the board. I would like to be the liaison to the police department.
Yeah, I am, I'm currently the liaison and, um, I think I'd like to keep it, I've been working with the police on L E P C and, um, I want to continue one more year at least, since I've only done it a year, so.
Yeah, you know, I've always, I've found this to be, uh, sort of an awkward, you know, I, I don't know that we have a good way of, um, working through this and figuring out, um, you know, who's gonna take the assignments and, uh, because it's.
Joint ones, though.
Some of it's.
Well, we shouldn't at, I mean, at nine forty-five or ten o'clock, we shouldn't be having a discussion, like, people, maybe we should just register, either we can table it, because we have a shorter agenda next time, or we can register interest like Nathan has done, and just leave it at that and we'll sift through it, you know, in another meeting.
Yeah.
But we shouldn't have, yeah, we, I don't think at ten o'clock we should be horse-trading.
Well, what we could do is, we could just, you know, look at this as a blank slate and send what we were interested in, in, or Jen, and make.
Uh, it really should, it really should go to Barney and his.
Like, we should go to them, right? And then.
I don't think so, I think this is, we, I believe that the chair ultimately would have the purview of deciding.
Well, it's not the decision.
It's just putting a list together.
Oh, putting a list.
We're putting the names together, yeah.
So why don't we have that go, yeah, let's go.
Yeah, which I cheer with Barney, you're, you're too at the, our next meeting.
Let's go have that go to Tim and Jen.
Yeah.
So the assignment to each of us is to go through this list and not worry about who's currently doing it, but indicate what are your.
Which ones you're interested in.
Which ones you're interested in, yes. Okay, and, um, see if you can get that to, um, Tim and Jen before, you know, in, in the next week, so that we will have it for the next meeting, and so we're gonna add this then to the next agenda. We'll come back and revisit this.
And we can do rock, scissors, paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so let's see if we can very quickly see, uh, if there are any liaison reports, and then we'll move to the approval of the minutes.
Any, um, the, um, we've talked very briefly about the M F C, first thing to know is that the library just got a new chiller, um, which is very good news.
I start going back to the library?
Yes. And, um, Christine Lear and I started drafting a new organizational chart for, um, town school, um, because municipal facilities, and the two facilities managers, the school facilities manager and the town facilities manager are involved in this process and have given us some input as to how they think it might be working, we've read, um, several town organizations from, uh, one from Bedford, one from Carver, that we've, you know, done quite a bit of research, we just presented it to the M F C, they're gonna chew on it a little bit and then we'd like to, you know, chop it around. So we'll see how that goes.
Any other reports?
Um, well, I, I think the L E P C covered Brian's scoop at tank issue.
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, so hopefully he can get that resolved. Another thing, so I, I'm not the D P W liaison, but I get stopped every time I go on there. So there were a couple of things recently that popped up. Um, one is they have the opportunity to get Contra's old bucket truck, and I know the bucket truck is always, yeah, and it's significantly reduced in price. Um, uh, he actually talked with Chris about it, he doesn't know exactly what it's gonna be, but it'll probably be somewhere in the ten to twenty thousand range, yeah.
He was asking for forty or more last time.
Yeah, exactly, and, and he didn't know exactly what Gary's budget was, but he said it's in like the ten thousand range they spend every year to get one, you know, to rent one. Um, so I said I, I would talk to everybody tonight, excuse me, and, you know, I mean, ultimately, we're not very restrictive on everybody's budget, right? You know, and so my thinking was if, you know, Gary kind of matches the numbers, or if he can make it work in his budget, you know, then I think it makes sense for us to support it, um, but obviously I wanted to see what everybody else's take is on it. You know, I mean, if it ends up being it's, it's ten to rent one and it's fifteen to buy one, you know, I mean, we're, you know, that, that's kind of a no-brainer, you know, I mean, as it gets higher.
Why doesn't Contra, they bought a new one or?
They bought, they bought a new one, they have more money than we do, so they buy new stock, yeah. But, um, but it was kind of the same.
Ten a year.
Right, if we're spending ten a year, right?
So if we're spending fifteen to that, that's a year and a half.
Exactly, we should buy, we should definitely buy it.
Everything else would be maintenance.
So how do we find the money for it?
Well, so I, that's, I, so I guess Gary's on vacation this week, so the next question is if, you know, if part of it's already in his budget, you know, maybe he can squeak the rest out of his budget, you know, and we just give him the okay to do it.
Out of cash, would you do that?
Or.
Capitalated amount of cash?
Revolving fund, can you go to that?
Yeah, or chapter ninety or something, right? Can you?
No, chapter ninety, I, I don't think you can.
Not a bucket truck, would you? No, you can buy like Sanders and stuff.
You can buy Sanders and, you can't even buy the trucks, they put the plow on.
Yeah, that's true.
So if you buy it out of operating, you don't appreciate it, it doesn't, doesn't go to the balance sheet thing, you just expense it out when you're done, right?
Sure.
It adds money, sure.
Okay, um, the second thing is the school tractor, so they're getting rid of the school tractor, right? And apparently they're getting two thousand for a trade-in for that, but they've got a nineteen fifty-something international at the cemetery, um, that is basically on its last legs, so I don't know if there was some way.
This is why we want to have this under both.
Centralized.
Because as, we, we don't need two tractors, one tractor would be really nice, one new tractor rather than two lousy ones.
Well, yeah, I, I, well, I think you get, you know, you get boys and their tractors sometimes, right? Um, but the thing is, you know, it would be like, that's a heck of a lot nicer tractor than the one that they've got, and for two grand, right, it doesn't make sense for the town to say, well, trade it in, right?
I see what you're saying.
So don't trade it.
Right, so don't trade it, right? But I, I think the school is expecting that too, right? There, there, that money towards, so I don't know, again, how we would finagle that.
That's his way of asking.
Yeah, we can ask, right? So, so maybe I'll approach, right, well, who's the school liaison, you?
Me.
Yeah, do you wanna approach? Well, I guess it would be under.
Just ask him not to trade it in.
Yeah.
Have we approved the replacement?
Yeah, so I guess it got approved, right?
I'll just ask, I'll just ask, uh, Jim.
Well, would it be Jim or would it be, yeah.
It's Jim, I mean, it's his tractor, I guess, right?
Yeah, technically, right? Yeah. No, so those were, excuse me, those were the other things.
Would it be tied on the bucket truck?
Yes, go for it.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Well, do we need to, yeah, do we need to take a vote on it?
Not if it's inside his budget.
No, if it's in his budget, I mean, we've been pretty flexible with it, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, good.
So what does, what does Jim have to do to transfer to, he doesn't do anything, not really, right?
It's just a letter of transmittal, just change the insurance on it, I mean, just the, what department, I mean, yeah.
I'll just copy you, I'll copy you on that, you know.
Yeah, it should be easy.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that is why, yeah, it'd be nice to have something that kind of focused on all of that, right? Because it doesn't make sense for.
Right, ridiculous. The left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that'll, that'll make those folks happy. So that's it, no, I, I mean, everything else seems to be chugging along in the transfer station, I guess. It's just, it's funny, you pull it, you go, shit.
This is why I have my trash picked up.
Yeah.
That's why I have my...
Chris comes and picks it up.
Yeah, oh, does he?
Yeah, Doc.
Yeah, no, I like Chris a lot, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, any other liaison reports? Okay.
Actually, just, I, one quick thing, I, I've been, a lot of people have been asking about CPC.
Yeah.
Um, for fall, so are we definitely having, I've been telling folks for having a fall town meeting, so...
Select board meeting, you know, let's have that on the agenda next time. I did, uh, have a little inner back and forth with Wayne about that and he is, um, definitely recommending, you know, it's our decision, but he would recommend we have a special town meeting this fall as well.
Yeah, yeah, because I've been telling everybody, yeah.
We're going to have a special town meeting. So we got it. That was going on this...
Okay, yeah.
It just occurred to me.
Right, okay, so, um...
It's the MFC, I think.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so special town meeting. So, Tim, what's the way we usually figure out the date that we would have that? Is that something for a special town meeting in the fall? Yeah.
First calls to the moderator.
Yeah, okay.
See if he's available to do it.
Okay, but do we have a...
And then we book the school, yeah.
We have a, uh, preferred date that we want to...
October usually, we've been...
I think the feeling is this September's too early.
September's too early, and November is Thanksgiving, comes up to Thanksgiving, so October is usually when we go.
And we're going to go back inside, I'm assuming?
I think that's...
So the thing to do is sync up with, uh, school calendar, right? You don't want to be in...
Yeah, because they've, they've got a lot going on.
Spaghetti supper or play.
Right.
Hopefully they'll have all that.
Well, that's usually in September, and, yeah, was that also in October? Yeah, okay.
Tim, would, do you want to follow up with Wayne?
Sure, I want to do that, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
And then we, at the next meeting, we can...
Loop in with Jim.
The school calendar, yeah.
Because it'll be a Monday night, right? Is it going to be a Monday night?
It doesn't have to be, but that's practically...
It's often been, yeah.
But you know what, I, lately we've been having, you know, Saturdays and Sundays and I think, uh, we should consider...
I'm good with that, I mean, that's easier, they have less stuff going on.
In the auditorium, yeah, on a weekend, yeah. Okay.
And hopefully we'll be able to do it hybrid and so that some people with, you know, kids might be able to join, or who knows?
All right, we just have to, um, review the warrant articles and, um, the minutes.